City of Loma Linda will bring this meeting to order. And as always, we will start the city council agenda with our roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Gendal.
Present.
Councilman Leonard. Councilman Rigsby. Mayor Pretempery Daly.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. There's no closed session this evening, so we will move on into the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pretempery Daly.
Okay, if you can bow your heads. Father in heaven, thank you for the many blessings you provide us. We are gifted with living in a free country, and we appreciate the benefits that provides us. And we pray that you'll be with this little community of Loma Linda, that we will make the right decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens. And we again thank you for your blessings. Amen. Okay, ready? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Before we continue with the city council agenda, there was a request that we dispense with the housing authority and the successor agency agendas because of some future issues. So I will go ahead and open the housing authority agenda. Mr. City Manager, is there anything to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
There is only the consent calendar to consider. Do I have a motion?
You've kind of messed me up. I'm not sure where my-
Sorry.
...paperwork is.
Just waiting back.
Move it. Move the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
The motion is to approve the housing authority consent calendar. Councilman Gendal.
Aye.
Councilman Leonard.
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby.
Yes.
Mayor Pretempery Daly.
Aye.
Mayor Duper.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the housing authority agenda. We will move into the successor agency for the redevelopment agency agenda. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
No, any oral reports from the public or anybody wishing to speak? I don't see anybody raising any hands yet, so we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Why aren't we doing this reverse order? Because it's got my paperwork all screwed up.
I'm sorry. There was a request from the city manager because there are a couple of things we may have to declare a conflict in later, and it would allow some time.
So the city manager. Okay. Okay.
Oh, we have a commenter for the successor agency. Our IT folks are setting it up.
I would, I would love to. It's not about an agenda item. Can I, can I have an extra minute or less?
Yes, sir. And do you understand that you're asking to comment during the oral public participation section of the successor agency? This is not the city council agenda yet. We have not quite got there.
I'm sorry. I wanted just to, the city's to come for me.
Yes, that'll be right after this.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move the consent calendar?
I'll move it.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out where we are because I have a letter of agreement between Loma Linda Professional Firefighters Local 935 that I have questions about.
No, no, sir.
That's on the, that's on the council agenda, yeah.
Okay.
The successor agency agenda is just the demands register and the minutes from our July 28 meeting.
What is this? Because you're a new mayor, you can change the order of everything?
No, sir. The only thing that's on the demands register is basically legal services.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, we have a first. Do we have a second?
I will, I will move it.
Okay.
If Deanna signs off on it, I'll move it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
The motion is to approve the consent calendar on the successor agency agenda. Councilman Gendal.
Aye.
Councilman Leonard.
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby.
Yes.
Mayor Pretempery Daly.
Yeah.
Mayor Duper.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will adjourn the successor agency and move back into the city council agenda. So now, at this point, this is where we invite anyone from the public who would like to speak on a non-agendied, agendied, agendized, I'll get it, item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to say item E. I would like to remove, delete one item, which is item four, from the city council.
Okay. And that was actually the item that you had some questions on, Ron. He wants to remove it.
One of, yeah, I have two questions.
Okay.
Now, our, what agenda are we on?
We're now back to the city council.
Okay.
And the city-
I've got questions on three B and four.
Okay, the city, the city manager would like to remove four. They're, they have to make some changes to it, so we're going to move that out. But before we get to the consent calendar, again, I'll ask if any member of the public would like to speak on a non-agendized item. This is your opportunity. If it is something on the agenda that we're coming up to, we, we prefer that you speak then, so we can encapsulate all those comments together. But if it's a non-agendized item, and I'm watching to see if we have any hands come up.
Steve, is this the item you wish to speak on?
I would, please.
Okay.
Okay. We have a speaker. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I live here at Amherst Court 26561. For the past seventeen years living here, we've made a massive investment to keep ourselves living here and enjoying life here. Because the side, side of the road going east to the county, I am asking this council and this city to look at Beaumont and reassess it. We are trying to get rain on with dust, sound of the cars, muddle with louder music, or more water.
Okay.
But, but you know, people go fast speeding everywhere, and, and it's not just Loma Linda. It's, you know, other city and Barton Road, Andersons.
Yeah, I, I know. I probably live, people actually race up and down in front of my house at night. It is a, and maybe you can either report back to us, or if we have a traffic advisory committee coming up, maybe you could be a part of that.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, before, before he leaves, can I ask a question? There, there are people that, that have talked with me that feel that the speed limits or the speed limit signs are not accurate. And they also express the impression that people that buy homes right on Beaumont Avenue know that that's a, a, a zone where people tend to speed through. How, how, what response should I give to those citizens?
Can I address that? May I?
Please.
Because when I bought this house seventeen years ago, the bridge wasn't in between Beaumont and across into Redlands. So I didn't have any noise when I bought this house. So over time, this has changed. And as we're developing more property in Loma Linda, we must be aware that that brings houses, and people, and cars. And we have to be aware of the traffic and the traffic flow. I don't think that anybody designed Beaumont as a country road or a farm road to bring the massive traffic like you have now. A Walmart truck will drive through here. Or you have the graders from the project putting up the power lines drive through here all the time. Or it's a bus, or it's a truck. And that is something that when I bought seventeen years ago, you'd never heard on the streets before. I'm here now seventeen years later because today, the sound of the road is so loud. And yes, I'm right on here. I'm, I have a big piece of property right on Beaumont. And that's why I'm bringing it forward to you. So if you want to say this speed up and that will reduce the issue, that's not going to reduce the issue. I'll be in front of you every week. That's not going to change anything. If we alert people, I'll send you a video of people driving down, looking at a phone while they drive. But they're not paying attention to this speed. They're not paying attention to people walking on the road. We're slowing it down so we can still enjoy it, still be the blue city that we're so proud of, because you can exercise in this city. So I think it's something we do need to look at and slow people down and alert them. And we need to bring in the county. Have the counties pay money on their side of the road.
Yeah, there's a lot of walkers and joggers and bikers and dog walkers and coyotes and lots of stuff there. And there are, I sit in the backyard and just kind of watch them go by. Most of the time, I can't see them. I just hear them. But some of them are so large, they're up over the top of my fence, and I can actually, you know, see these big behemoths lumbering by. I wonder, is that, is that something that could be done? Like a, like a weight limit or a-
So that's actually illegal.
Is it?
Trucks are supposed to stay on a truck route.
Ah.
And so if trucks and buses and these other large vehicles outside of the service vehicles that are working on the Edison stuff, that's permissible because they're going to the Edison worksite. But truck drivers know they're supposed to stay on a truck route, and if they're doing that, they're, they're-
That one isn't very often. It's more likely, you know, service vehicles and things. But it happens.
Yeah. It's interesting. And I'm sure it does, because, you know, there's the dump and stuff down there, and I'm sure vehicles are trying to cut corners to get around traffic and things like that. So, yeah. But we'll, we'll definitely ask our staff to take a look at some options, and please feel free to report back to us. We'd like to hear what the progress is. Obviously, you have an ear with one of your neighbors, Dr. Leonard here, so. But it is of concern, I think, to all of us. No matter where we live in town, we all experience these type of problems, so. Okay?
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Yes, sir. Anytime.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that wants to speak during the public comment? Okay, looks like we don't. So we will move on into the first scheduled item, and that would be the consent calendar. However, we have pulled item number four off the consent calendar. And then, Dr. Daly, did you have some questions about anything else there on that?
Yeah, I would also like to pull item three B.
Okay.
I have no objection to using the senior center as a, a testing station, station for COVID-19. But my question is, for whom? What kind of symptoms are they supposed to show? And who's going to pay for it? Yeah. Yeah, three B is what I thought it was. authorize city manager and city attorney to negotiate an agreement with San Bernardino County Department of Public Health.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That, that is a county that want to have a, a testing center.
Yeah.
Here.
I'm not opposed to that, but I want to know a little more about it than was in the staff report.
It's, what, $6,000 a month rent?
No, no, they, they currently, the, the county using the Redlands East Valley High School for the testing center. And, and because the school is starting, they, they looking for an, another location. And they approach us and to have a testing center here. And all it is, is just people come and go over and get the test.
Okay. And, and do they, can anybody drive through and get that test?
Yes, sir.
Do they have to show symptoms?
At this point, anybody can come by and get that test.
And is there any cost? There's a cost. Who's paying for it?
Well, they're going to rent the facility from us.
If Dr. Rigsby comes through and has a test on a COVID test, who's paying for that?
That, that's part, I don't know. It's between the, the patient and the county.
But it's-
Right now, they, they want to use our facility, and that's it. They want to rent our facility.
Okay, so they do pay rent for the facility?
I'm, I'm asking them to pay rent, yes.
Well, that's not quite the same thing. Are they going to pay rent for the facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Because my wife has been ordering a number of COVID tests, and it's taking up over two weeks to get the results back. Are we facing the same thing here, or do we have any clue?
That, that's why I would like them to be here. And for what, I talked to them. They said they start to supply now. So, so yes, the answer is yes, they will have more supply to be able to do more testing. Yes.
So Councilman Rigsby can drive through, get a COVID test, he doesn't have to pay for it, and he'll get results within two weeks or hopefully a lot less?
That detail, I don't know. I can find out from them. Yes.
I think that kind of changes depending on what public health is doing at the time.
Well, sure.
Yeah, I know they've had, they've, yeah, exactly. They've had some free testing, and then they've scaled things back, and then there were requirements. But I think most of that's up to the county. I don't know that we have any say in that.
Yeah, but, and I agree. But if they're renting, if they're leasing our facilities for that purpose, we, we should have some understanding of the details of the outcomes.
Priority access for Loma Linda residents?
Well, I wasn't going there, but yeah, that would be okay, too.
And that's one of the reasons, at the beginning, I asked them to have a, a testing site here in Loma Linda at least once a week.
Yeah.
So that we can have access for our city employee to go get the test. That may be twice a month. And that would be, that'd be nice.
Is that the primary reason we're setting this testing site up?
No, sir. The, the primary reason is they got to kick out of Redlands East Valley High School, so they're looking for a new location.
Because of-
School starting.
School starting?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I have, I have a few questions also, just related to more or less the traffic flow or the expected traffic flow.
Yes.
And would this be a certain day a week, or seven days a week, or do you know any of those details?
There's, there's supposed to be five hour, I mean, six hour day, five days a week, and they will have a parking monitor on site.
Okay. And have we done that here before? Because I could swear-
No, we did the, we did at-
Loma Linda Academy. But I could swear, I came by here the other day during the day, and there was people lined up for something over there at the senior-
That's for lunch.
Oh.
Senior luncheon program. Yes, to come pick up lunch.
There you go.
I understand it's probably not something we have any control over. But do we have any sense of how long it'll take to get the results back? Because this is a very, very controversial issue right now. They say if it's, if it's going to take over 24 hours, it's not even worth doing.
Yeah. No, no, sir. I do not doubt it.
I was on the county, the county PIO call earlier in the week. The, they are, they have had a big problem with testing turnaround times, as you were mentioning. The county has two brand new vendors who are guaranteeing 48-hour turnaround times for the testing. So they brought them on last week, and they're starting to ramp up. So it'll be one of the new vendors that will be active here doing the testing. We can't guarantee it, but that's the contract the county has with their vendors.
Okay. Because it's, it's a big issue. My wife is ordering these tests for, for some of her patients, and they're telling her it's 15 to 17 days before they'll get a result.
Correct. And that was the issue with the county, too. There, some of the testing facilities and some of the tests, they just don't have the reagents available.
They don't have what?
The reagents, the, the chemicals you need to, to process the test. So they brought in two, like I said, two additional vendors, two brand new vendors with a level of service contract to get reasonable-
And it's not as though I believe we should have, or would ever have, control over that. But I think we at least need to be aware of, in communicating with, with our constituents, what their expectation should be.
The expectation is, is within two days.
Okay.
Is, is the goal from the testing. And also from, you know, from the county, they needed a place in a community that's- Yeah, it, it is appointment. It's not a walk-in, and it's a walk-in, not a drive-in.
I'm sure.
It's a walk-in, not a drive-in.
Okay.
So-
And they still should get it back within two days?
Yes.
Because that's remarkable.
That's, that's incredible. That's their, their level of service that they're expecting from their vendors.
Because I have a number of senior citizens that have been asking me about COVID testing. And I've been sending them, there's a, Loma Linda has a facility over behind Lowe's. And they're having all kinds of issues, all kinds of issues. And I'm hearing about it.
It is a, it is a national issue, not just localized.
You're right. You're right.
And the, the purpose that we were eager to, to have the facility here is allow, you know, allow the community to get rapid and ready testing, rather than having to go into Redlands, go into other areas. And we felt that it would be a great, a great service for our community.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent calendar?
On the, the one award of contract, there was a bid protest that city manager would like to explain why that was over, overruled.
Why what?
Yes, sir. On, on item three B, on the EOC expansion, what, the contract on the EOC expansion, I, I would like to mention that we did have two protests from the second and the third lowest bidder. And, and we look into it, the, the third lowest bidder complained about the, the lowest bidder that they didn't have the, a subcontractor for roofing. And so therefore, he said that the roofing will not be guaranteed. And because, so I called and talked to the lowest bidder, this, he said that because the, the roofing's so small that he would do it himself, so it not require a, a subcontractor for roofing. And so therefore, he can do it. So we denied the, the protest. The second protest came from the second low bidder, who said that the, the subcontractor of the lowest bidder is not licensed with the state labor group. And we, we, we checked it, and it turned out that it, they are. So we all, that also denied the, the appeal. So the staff recommended we award the contract to the lowest bidder.
Yeah, the other thing, I read the staff report, and I didn't get a good sense of why we were expanding so substantially. I mean, this is a lot of money. Why we are expanding so substantially the emergency operations center.
Yes. What happened is, you remember back in 20, 2010?
And we had the flood.
We have a flood, and we have to stay there for a couple of days. It turned out, it doesn't have any restroom facility or the shower for the EOC facility. So as part of this expansion, we're going to put in the shower, the restroom, the locker, and also couple office for the, the, the staff, for the emergency service staff. And that's the first phase. And, and so the second phase is for us to remodel the, the dorm for the, the fire station. The fire station was built over 30 years ago, so therefore, the restroom building doesn't meet the current ADA standard, or the dorm room doesn't meet the current ADA standard. So we have to modify and, or remodel the dorm part of the existing fire station. So by doing the EOC first, we'll get the completed first, and then I will move our firemen to stay in the, in the EOC and use a new facility while we remodel the, the fire station, the dorm. Again, this is to meet the current ADA requirement.
I don't even know how to respond to that.
I know. It's, it's expensive. That's why this is the second time-
I mean, we're talking half a million plus dollars here.
Yes. Yes.
Just for adequate facilities to sleep and go to the bathroom?
Well, it, it's, it's mandated by state law that we have to make sure that our city facility provided for the ADA access. And, and so we just tried to meet, meet the current code.
So we have no choice in this, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
It still doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, I mean, this is, you're talking to somebody that's been out camping in tents and safaris, and this doesn't make sense to me. But I understand. We live in California.
Do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I have a few questions.
Oh, go ahead.
So three C, can you expand on what that is and what, what it for, basically?
Which one again? B is a boy.
The C, the water reservoir.
Oh, yes. Yes. If all this booming in, in town, all these new houses that is under construction and be going to be built, we require a new water reservoir. So, so last year, we did a study. We, we tend an engineering firm that did the study and, and came up with, we need, we require about additional one million gallon in, in the storage. And so now we go design, we retain an engineer to help us design that facility.
Okay. And just to confirm, it's $168,000 and $168,500 just for the design, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then my second question was related to five. We just got that paper. Is this a private grant from Firehouse Subs, like the restaurant chain?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Just to pick up-
Have we received it in the past?
We did one time. Yes.
So just to pick up on this, so that, I mean, it, it defies my quest for logic. But if we have firemen that live in a firehouse immediately adjacent to the emergency operations center, why do we have to do all this? This, it makes no sense. It defies any sense of logic.
It, it's just like the firemen live in a firehouse, it's to require fire sprinkler system.
All right. It's good. I want to keep him safe. The, the, the EOC expansion, something we've been talking about for a couple of years. So that's been on our radar, and we budgeted and planned for it. And so this is all pretty good planning, in my opinion, of, of setting up facilities, overnight facilities at the EOC, so we can move our firemen temporarily there and then complete the much-needed rehab on the dorm. The dorm is pretty old and outdated, and it, it definitely needs a refresh, so.
It's, it's way overdone, though, Mayor, if I can say that. Way overdone. I mean, look at the kind of money we're talking about here.
Right. And I-
This is crazy.
Back to that point, I think the only way to get around that is if you were to dismantle it. But other than that, you can't really not do it, right?
And that's the problem. That's the problem. I agree with you.
Correct.
What's that? What's that?
It's not a normal.
The ULC is not a normal building.
Yeah, but it's right next door to the fire station.
Yes, but it's, it's not.
I mean, it's.
Okay, so first, the EOC is designed for emergency operations. That means that if there's an earthquake, a major disaster, the building is staffed with 20 or 30 people 24 hours a day, seven days a week until the disaster is resolved. So there has to be someplace in there for meals, for bathrooms, those type of facilities without, without impinging on whatever fire services. Secondly, beyond just a regular building, there has to be a hardened building. The, the last thing you need is an emergency operations center that doesn't survive the emergency.
And, and I understand.
So the construction standards are, are significantly higher for that building than what a typical building is, and there's, there's a big part of the cost is in hardening that building.
And I understand. You and I both worked for an ambulance company years ago when we were much younger guys. This kind of stuff was not any remote factor at all and we survived and did just fine.
It, it was, it was a different world. We.
It has. It has to.
Three years on ambulance company, this, I mean.
Ron, Councilman Daley, it, it has to withstand peaceful protests.
People protest.
Peaceful protests.
Peaceful protests.
That requires it to be fireproof, bomb-proof, frozen, water bottle proof.
So if Conrad and I go out and protest, then.
Yeah. If you can knock it down, they did a bad job.
I mean, I.
That was a great commentary.
I understand what Councilman Gindal is saying, is we have no choice. So I, I get that, but.
Wow.
It's frustrating.
Yeah.
Okay. It's like everybody's a wimp now.
Okay. Do you, any more questions on the consent calendar? All right. Do we have a motion to move it?
Wait, wait, is this the consent calendar?
Yes, sir. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Thank you. And the motion is to approve the consent calendar on the city council agenda. Councilman Gindal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Riggsby? Mayor Prettemory Daley?
No.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you, it passes unanimously.
Okay. I'm sorry to throw another curveball, and this was another request, that we move the new business item up, number eight, before we dispense with the old business, and that is to pick a voting delegate and alternate to the League of California Cities 2020 Virtual Annual Conference and Expo.
I nominate Councilman Gindal.
He followed the numbers. You're kind of jumping around here.
I'm sorry. What was that, Dr. Riggsby?
I nominate Councilman Gindal.
I accept.
Okay, we have a nomination. Typically, what we have done in the past, if you guys are good with that, is we, we always send the city manager as the alternate.
Well, this year is a low show, so it'll be easy for him.
He's trying to get out of it. But we should designate, just in case you can't make it. Is everybody good with that, too? Sorry.
That's fine.
Okay, so we have, we have Councilman Gindal appearing in front of the League of Cities on our behalf and with the city manager supporting that. Do we need to do this formally as a vote or is that just a direction to staff? Okay.
Direction.
All right. Madam Clerk, you're saved from another roll call, thank you. Okay. Dr. Daley, now we're gonna move into old business, I'm sorry. We're there, no other modifications. We'll start with number six and go from there. Do we have a presentation?
Yeah, I think we're gonna dispense with some conflict of interest issues here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, in the past, we've had conflicts of interest due to employment with the university, the medical center. On item 6A involving an agreement for fire suppression services with the university, Councilman Riggsby and Leonard have previously declared a conflict of interest. The other three would not have a conflict at this time, so the three of you would act as a quorum on 6A. The other two, Riggsby and Leonard, would have to step aside. On item 6B, this involves law enforcement services that are provided by the county sheriff's department, and so we, we would add Mayor Duper as a conflicted member of the council. That will require the drawing of straws. And so I have my three straws and Mayor Duper, Councilman Riggsby, and Councilman Leonard may choose. And the person who picks the vote straw will participate and vote on the item.
I'm the voter.
Well, the first one, we've got here.
Councilman Riggsby draw the first, drew the first straw, which was to participate, and the other two will be disqualified.
Perfect. You should go get a lottery ticket after this. Well, are we gonna do, which one are we gonna do first?
6, 6A. It's gonna be quick, so I will.
I'm gonna go get something. Yeah, we'll be back in a little bit.
No, this is, this is fast, so. If, if, if you, if you recall back in 2016, the, the, the city council did approve the condition approval for the construction of the, the new Loma Linda Hospital. And as part of the condition of the approval, the, we're supposed to purchase the, the aero ladder trucks, enter into the staff support agreement for the suppression personnel, enter into the staffing support agreement for the prevention personnel. So as part of the negotiation at that time, it determined that the city will purchase the, the aero truck and the university will pay for the staffing. And, and we came up with the cost of $900 per bed, per year. And we came up with that number, it came from the study that we did for the VA hospital. Pardon me?
For years?
For a year, yes, yes, sir. To support the, for fire services. They replaced the cost, okay. So, so we used the, the number that we, that we charged the current, the VA hospital to the, to the, the new hospital. And they agree and the city council approved. But at that time, the agreement was combined, called public services agreement for both police and fire. And so at this time, they want to separate the two agreements for the police and fire services. And so the fire agreement is exactly the same as.
What's the advantage of that?
Because they want to change the, the police agreement.
Ah.
Yes, yes, and that's been next. So, so the staff recommend, and, and they have been paying for these fire services these past four years. So they've been paying, Diana, bill them every month and then they pay. So the staff recommended, the city council approved, retained the current agreement that we have with them, the way it is. That's item.
So this is no change except we're separating fire services and personnel costs versus...
Police services, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and so my question is, does this change accurately reflect, I, I mean, we're not trying to make money off Loma Linda Health, at least I'm not. So does this represent a balance in our costs and what they're paying?
Yes, sir.
For the fire?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I need to know then. Okay.
And, and, and this is per bed, per licensed bed. So if there are any changes to the hospital, they increase or, increase or decrease number bed, then we just adjust it per number.
This is per patient bed?
Yes, sir. So it come out, it's come out to quite a bed, it's come out to.
Yeah, but if, if, if there's a fire on the 16th floor.
Well, that's why we have a fire sprinkler system.
The, the, when they were trying to figure out this formulation, this was a few years ago, as, as we were in the pre-planning pages, they looked at what we have done with the old VA across the street and they contract with us for fire service.
Yes.
And it's based on per patient, per bed?
Yeah, it's the same formula that they're basically applying to make sure it's equitable between all the different institutions.
So the incentive, if I've administered the medical center, I want to keep the lower-floor beds full and keep the upper-floor beds limited.
I, I guess you'd have to look at the, at the value of saving 900 bucks versus probably thousands, you would, you would.
Licensed.
Oh, okay, licensed.
Oh, okay, that makes a difference. Okay, that makes a difference. Okay. I'm good.
Does this take into account inflation or is this?
Well, what, what we do is, that's why this contract is, is five years, we go, look, look back at it again in five years and we can do another study and, and go from there, yes.
I will move the item.
Okay, first and a second, or no, we don't have a second. Do we have a second? Oh, we do. Madam Clerk.
And the motion is to approve the fire suppression services agreement with Loma Linda University Health. Councilman Gindal?
Aye.
Mayor Prettemory Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to you, Dr. Daley, and I'm gonna swap out.
Wow, do I get the gavel too? Yeah, no, no. No, no.
Hit it, I don't know, you gotta hit it multiple times to drive Dusty crazy.
All right. I'm worried Dusty's out buying a burrito. Boy. Stick up.
city of Loma Linda and Loma Linda University Health. Again, back in 2016, the city council did approve an agreement for public safety, agreement for both police and fire. And at time, at that time, it's combined both police and fire into one contract. The one, the reason they want to separate these two is because they want to change the police contract, okay? Currently, we provide the police services to the hospital 18 hours a day, seven days a week.
18?
18. So they want to change it to 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Oh, okay.
And everything pretty much stayed the same. And the primary location for the police services will be around the hospital only. Primary. So therefore, that's mean that.
Meaning your emergency room?
No, around the hospital.
Okay, so just random.
And, and, and the reason for that is, is what's so nice about, we have contract with the county sheriff, there's, there's incident where at ER, they require more police.
Right.
So all I have to do, the sheriff just call for backup.
Right.
For the, the, the sheriff, the patrol around the city or grand terrace in the county area. And vice versa, if other location needed assistance, that, that police can go out, but even for a long time, they have to notify the, the university security services.
Okay.
And, and just to, to be sure, the current agreement that we have is that the city will retain $850,000 of the, of the mercantile sale tax. Anything that exceed that, it can be paid toward the, the sheriff contract for the hospital. And that for that current year, it cannot be rolled over for the following years.
So what happens in the following years?
They just, they just have to.
It will roll over.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I thought that's what you said.
So, so the city will, will keep it different and the following year, we just see how much sale tax they receive for mercantile. And if it exceed 850, it will pay for the, the police services.
And will that come back to the council?
No, sir, just go in, in, to finance.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm saying when they look to see if the taxes from, from the mercantile will cover the, the added cost of, of law enforcement.
Yes.
If it does not.
Then they pay. And what's so nice about this, yes, what's so nice about it, we, because we received the sale tax from the state, like three months behind.
Yeah.
So, so we, we send them a bill every month, so they pay us every month. And then at the end of the year, we did a calculation where we see how much we receive for the sale tax and how much is the, the cost for the police, we just write them a check and give them back.
Okay. You're good with this, Diana? All right, because.
How you agree?
You're the bean counter in the city, so if this doesn't work, we're coming after you. Okay, questions from council members?
So to clarify, the maximum mercantile tax that Loma Linda can receive that's gonna go in our coffers would be $850,000?
No, no, sir. No, sir. It will be $850,000 plus anything that exceeds the police contract, if there is.
The 850 is the base, so that's what we get first. And then anything above that, that then gets applied as a credit to their service contract.
Yeah.
But it cannot exceed the actual cost. So once they've maxed the actual cost of their service contract, then we get the difference.
That, that, that makes sense.
Yes. And that 850,000, it came from the average revenue we received from 2013, 14, and 15, that's how we came up with the base number.
Got it. So if I understand correctly, say that the total tax. Got it, so if I understand correctly, say that the total taxable amount is gonna be two million dollars, we get eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, say that the services cost another million, one million of that is gonna go to police services, and then we'll get another hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Very good, for a new councilman, you are on top of your game, I'm impressed. Councilman Rigsby.
When you say they're primarily around the medical center, that means they can be called away in an emergency?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
But is there some kind of a limitation on what percentage of their shift can be, quote, emergencies? So they won't be patrolling Beaumont Avenue?
No.
Have you guys noticed Beaumont Avenue is actually a bona fide road now? It's not somebody's driveway. It's smooth, you can actually drive, so I guess people can drive faster now, so we made it worse. Yeah. Redlands paved it correctly because one of their city council, uh, women, um, put them up to it. She was embarrassed by how badly it was paved the last time, and she got them to repave it, so we have to, you know, praise Tony Momberger for that.
So again, the primary will be at the hospital.
Okay. Comment from the representative from the sheriff's department?
They're ready. We have been communicating with the, uh, the captain and lieutenant, so as soon as you say yes tonight, they will, we will be working with them on get additional staffing for them.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, how do we go about this now?
I'm of approval.
Oh, we got a motion.
I second.
And a second.
Okay, the motion is to approve the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Loma Linda University Health. Councilman Gendal.
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby.
Yes.
Mayor Prettemory Daley.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously, thank you very much.
I really was trying to squeeze a comment out of the sheriff's department, but, uh, not successfully, so... Yeah, you're welcome. We get a lot of comments from your colleague here, but...
If you're connected to the Zoom meeting via phone, and there's an item you wish to speak on, please press star nine to raise your hand in the virtual chat, so it'll be visible to me. Thank you.
I'm gonna turn on my microphone. Are we on to number seven? Okay.
We did the introduction on this one last time, kinda covered all the bases, as far as measure V, the effect, um, uh, limiting traffic and growth and, and the hillside preservation. What I did wanna do is just take a real brief, 'cause it, it came up several times in discussion. Last time, this is the, the government code section that the, um, director of LAFCO, local agency formation commission, sent us, with the appropriate highlighted areas on what the actual process would be, um, if there is a, a detachment and an annexation by Colton of this property. So, what would happen is, is the, the commission would receive a, a request or a change for reorganization, either from the private party or from the city of Colton. The play, the change will be placed on their agenda at their next meeting, um, and, uh, a copy of that agenda will be, will be forwarded to each city involved. And from past experience, LAFCO wallpapers us with agendas and notices, the, the planning get, plan, our planner, our planning director, city manager, I don't know if the city clerk gets them, but, um, they, they wallpaper us with those notices, so it's not mailing one to some obscure mailbox and hoping, hoping nobody sees it. At that point, um, the city, which would be Loma Linda, has sixty days to, um, create a resolution, either approving or requesting termination of the proceedings. The, the resolution is then forwarded to LAFCO, um, and once, once LAFCO receives that resolution, uh, requesting termination, they are required by law to cease and, uh, terminate the process at that point. So, um, there, there was a lot of discussion about what, what happens, that very clearly sets out the, the steps on, on how, how that, how that proceeds, should it proceed? And that, that is all I got for you on clarification.
Didn't we, weren't we gonna have a presentation from the developer?
I believe the developer was going to call in, um, and wanted to do some clarification. If they're on the, if they're on the line, they can do a couple minutes of just explanation of what, what is going on for the same thing, just so we're all speaking about the same, the same issue and not speaking about, uh, what somebody heard or what somebody thinks they heard.
Okay, and then I see we also have a, a whole new stack of letters and emails, um, from residents, both of Loma Linda and Colton.
All right, have we got them online?
Can I respond to that comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I count three Loma Linda residents and twenty-two Colton residents in the letters and signatures. Maybe four Loma Linda residents.
You're talking about the comments?
Okay, and with that, it's, um, unless you got any additional questions, we'll get the developer and, uh...
Well, let, let me, um... For the common man, which I consider myself, take everything you talked about and boil it down to two or three sentences, in terms of where we're at.
Um, where, where we are right now is, there, eh, from what I understand, there is a proposal to do something at the city of Colton.
Right.
I don't know what it is, it's in their planning department, is under review, has not been made public.
Because the developer has not been in contact with us?
With us, because, if you, un, under the sphere of influence, the way it operates, Colton is responsible for future planning.
Right, right.
So they're, they're running through that, and typically, you guys remember when we did the specific plan for Area D with the Groves and, and we're...
Right.
Ludenhart's building, that's a fairly long, um, process to get through the environmental, so it, it's not gonna come out in, in weeks, it is months for those things to come through. Then Colton, Colton would take some form of action.
So we had a whole series of responses, a couple weeks ago on this, uh, protests even, I could say. Uh, what should they take away from this?
So, as, as we sit right now, there is no action in front of the city of Loma Linda. Everything is going on at Colton, and there's, there are under review at Colton with no action to be taken. So, should action come forward, then before anything permanent happens and there's a detachment and that piece of property shifts from Loma Linda to Colton, under Loma Linda's rules, that is not a developable piece of property, that is in the South Hills.
Okay.
And is essentially vacant, I think it's one to ten, eh, one dwelling unit per ten acres.
Okay.
So it is, is very, very sparsely, um, developable. So if it shifts to Colton, then it would fall under Colton's rules.
Or use the raise hand function.
To accomplish that shift, they would have to follow those rules up there, they would have to notice it, have a hearing, notice us, wait for our resolution, and then be bound by whatever our resolution is, either acceptance or denial.
That makes perfect sense to me. My question is, uh, and, and I don't, um, we'll have to see if there's a response, does it make sense to the citizens that have the concern about the development issue?
Only, only they can answer that, I can't.
Yeah, I agree. Have you heard from any of them?
I, I have heard from one or two of them. I think the more, the, the ones I have talked to are, are impassioned, but actually very thoughtful and logical people, and the more information they get, the more clarity they have on what the options are and, and the, the way to progress.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, whether, whether they're happy, I don't know, but at least they're getting information to go forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's our responsibility, yeah.
All right, Matt, Mark, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, my name is Mark Staff, I'm the senior developmental executive, um, with University Realty. Um, with me on this call is Christina Gassi of the Dolphin Group, one of our team members, and Dave Saunders, who's a land use attorney to advise us on zoning and annexation matters. Thank you for giving us some time this evening to talk about the four hundred and thirty acres owned by University Realty within Loma Linda. We had prepared a PowerPoint presentation, I don't know if that's available to use this evening. So, uh, i- is that gonna be put up on the screen for people, or are you just gonna allow me to make a few comments?
I think they're working on pulling it up right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not in possession of the, um, the PowerPoint.
Okay, we had got, uh, some confirmation from the city clerk, I believe it was, that had been received. How much time would you like to give me, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think we'd, we'd all like adequate, um, exploration of the topic, so as long as you don't take us into tomorrow, I think we're okay.
I promise I won't take you into tomorrow. My remarks were based around that PowerPoint presentation, so, um, this will probably be shorter than it would have been if I had the PowerPoint. I think what's important to know is, there's four hundred and thirty acres that University Realty owns, located within Loma Linda. That was a gift provided to us by a donor, and that gift will hopefully produce, um, benefits to us that will be used for educational programs and student scholarships. We're, we are not a typical developer, uh, or we're purely profit-seeking, we are benefit-seeking entity. I think it's important to note that that four hundred and thirty acre was previously annexed into Loma Linda in nineteen eighty-nine, and when annexed, Loma Linda stated it has the ability of plans to meet service needs and such delivery that originally come from the north. That was the quote from a LAFCO staff report, January eighteenth, nineteen eighty-nine. That's, that's, that was important to us. We do have a pre-app, pre-zoning application with the city of Colton, which is really relative only to two hundred and three of our four hundred and thirty acres. The remaining two hundred and twenty-seven acres, which would be the northern portion of our property, is intended to remain within the city of Loma Linda. And in fact, it is our goal that that two hundred and twenty-seven acres of land that remains in Loma Linda be preserved in perpetuity, as open space, never to be developed. So several things were important to us, and before we could consider anything, we had to first consider the site itself, and so we have conducted all of the normal due diligence and planning studies that include analysis of photography, geology, and danger species, view quarters, hydrology, image patterns, utilities, traffic, et cetera. Most important to us was access, there's four potential access points to this property. Two of them are from the north of Sage Drive and Richardson in Loma Linda, and two are from the south off of Colton's Prado and Crystal Ridge lands. The southern portion adjacent to Colton has immediate access to roadways and utilities, and is the most developable with the least amount of, uh, impact. With these factors in mind, we, we wanna establish a couple of goals, we wanna achieve legal and shoreable access to our property, and that is both to, uh, vehicular access as well as the city services. We wanna proceed in a very environmentally sensitive manner, we're very concerned about protecting the environment, we wanna preserve a significant amount of the land in perpetuity. One of the ways to do that is to pursue clustered development pattern on only the southern, southern portion, which is closest to utilities and accessibility, and that also protects view sheds from Loma Linda. The presentation we had, had an exhibit in it, which shows the view sheds, and what I can say to you is, there was no business or homeowner in Loma Linda that would see any of this development on the property, unless, of course, they were hiking in the preserve area. So by keeping the development on that southern two hundred and three acres, view sheds in Loma Linda are protected. Now, you discussed a little bit the process with LAFCO. We are in the very early stages of staff review with Colton. We've got great respect for the public review process, which is clearly in legally defined in California law, so any project of this scope requires working with city staff, local agencies, all stakeholders, to discuss, review, and define the plans. So the plans we submitted are being reviewed, and we will discuss those and possibly modify them as we go through that review process. To begin that process, the city of Colton has approved two contracts, one for a third-party planner and a separate one with an environmental consultant. All the costs of that work are paid for by us, through reimbursement agreements with the city of Colton. This process in no way burdens the city of Loma Linda. If Colton ultimately approves the pre-zoning and certifies the EIR, then and only then would we pursue an annexation application. If they deny us, then we don't pursue the annexation. California state law requires Loma Linda, as was stated earlier, to be provided with sixty days to affirm or reject the application. And if, if annexation is ultimately approved by Loma Linda, it becomes relieved of all of its obligations to serve the two hundred and three acres, and in return, it gets a gift of two hundred and twenty-seven acres of preserved land. Dave, I don't know if you wanna add, uh, anything about California Government Code fifty-six seventy-five-one? If you're on the, on the call.
Hello, this is Dave Saunders, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, thank you very much. As Mark indicated, I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I just wanted to confirm, uh, that we understand exactly what Mr. Bolowich indicated from LAFCO, I met with the LAFCO director some time ago, and, uh, there was a concern from the council at the last meeting, that somehow this annexation is gonna slip by your council, and you're gonna find this to be some sort of... and you're going to find this to be some sort of fait accompli, and that's simply not the case. The law indicates quite clearly that the city of Loma Linda is going to have the ability to determine whether it wants this property detached or not, and if you were to indicate that at some point in the future, and as Mr. Bolowich indicated, this is several months away, if you were to indicate that, proceedings to detach this property would absolutely terminate. So, I don't think there's no legal question whatsoever of how this is going to work, and ultimately, the project's going to go through this review process, and all of the stakeholders, regardless of what city they live in, or whether they live in the county, all the people in the region will have the opportunity to be heard on the merits of the project. So, thank you for the opportunity to be heard, but I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Dave. I want to run through a couple of important aspects that people are most concerned about, one of which is traffic, and we are very much aware that traffic's a major concern. Colton will be reviewing the traffic study, defining impacts that are articulated by the traffic study, and then also potential ways to mitigate those impacts. We must pay our fair share of mitigating those impacts. We are also proposing to make significant improvements that benefit the entire region. Example, a condition which is common in Canyon is neighborhoods that are essentially very large cul-de-sacs. That's the condition that exists for both Prado and Crystal Ridge neighborhoods. What we are proposing to do is develop a loop road that would provide additional emergency access as well as improved utility connections for both those neighborhoods. We're working with a property owner to the west to help facilitate a new road from Ritchie Canyon, Westwood, west to Barton Road, all within the city of Colton. We also propose funding to help mitigate traffic in Canyon, such as traffic calming congestion relief measures. We're also looking at smart traffic technology for the road network. A full extent of the impacts and improvement required is going to come from a review of the traffic study. We're aware of this, we're prepared to pay our fair share and beyond our fair share. The other major issue we know of is fire safety and emergency access. So, we've been working with the city of Colton and fire agencies, and through that, we would incorporate extensive fuel modification plan that would be enforced by the homeowners' association to ensure compliance. We're proposing a one and a half million gallon water tank and a dip pond to aid regional firefighting efforts. That dip pond would reduce time and cost for water dropping and fire suppression. We will develop a helicopter landing pad for emergency use, and we'll also develop a firefighting staging, which will allow firefighters in the region to base themselves closer to any fire in the area. Again, reiterating, our goal is to preserve 367 acres, or approximately 75% of this total 430 acres. This includes 140 acres in the southern portion, some of which would be parks and recreation space, plus 227 acres that remains in Loma Linda and would be preserved in perpetuity. We would also create public access trails connecting all of this open space for public benefit. So, benefits to the residents of Loma Linda include new fire safety facilities, a road plan and funding mechanism for traffic improvements, 367 acres of dedicated open space, public trails, 227 acres of open space left in Loma Linda for public use, never to be developed. In Loma Linda, relieved of its obligations to provide police service to the 207 acres that is annexed into Colton. In closing, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our objective is to pursue the review of this project. Based on all the rights retained by the city under California Government Code, we respectfully ask that you allow this public review process to work, and allow you and all of the residents to find out what the benefits to Loma Linda are. We're committed to meeting with you and your staff throughout the process to share information and seek input, and ensure public benefit for Loma Linda is clearly defined. So, what we're doing is really asking that the process not be unnecessarily cut short of this project. As I mentioned earlier, with me is Christina Agassi from the Dolphin Group and part of our team, and I'm going to ask Christine if she would please respond to comments that had been made at the last meeting on this matter in July.
Certainly, thank you, Mark. Mayor, council members, and members of the public who are here tonight, I just wanted to touch on a few items that were raised on the July 14th meeting. First one, as Mark previously noted, the site that we are looking to potentially develop in the future is not viewable from Loma Linda. In fact, it's not visible from Ritchie Canyon Road either. One commenter raised the issue of low-income housing, and just want to clarify that we are not and have not proposed low-income housing on the property. Relative to water infrastructure, someone mentioned that the area is insufficient water structure, and we are aware of that. In fact, we understand that it is deficient and in need of upgrades, and that's why our proposal, working through the city of Colton, would upgrade the water infrastructure for Prado Lane and Crystal Ridge communities. The domestic service pressure would remain at consistent operating range. The water pressure for public and safety services would be improved and more reliable for fighting fires. With regards to emergency access, we agree that it's a critical issue. Right now, many of the neighborhoods, as Mark mentioned, off Ritchie Canyon have only a single point of access. Any development on our property would connect the Prado and Crystal Ridge neighborhoods by way of a looped road that would give them two points of access, critical in the case of emergency vehicle access or evacuation. And in the case of Prado, there's obviously also an elementary school there that would benefit from that second point of access. The connected loop system also improves the delivery of essential services such as water and electricity, rather than having those connections dead-end at the end of those streets. We're also working, as Mark mentioned, with another property owner. We've identified and are seeking to facilitate a new road connecting Ritchie Canyon and Barton. This would divert commuting traffic as well as provide a secondary access for emergency response. As we all know, traffics, I've heard this at the beginning of this meeting this evening, traffic's a huge issue for the area, and that's why we believe that any development should serve as a catalyst to fund roadway improvements. The detailed study of traffic impacts and mitigations will be completed as part of the EIR, and we are evaluating and have been evaluating potential road design features for traffic calming, congestion relief, and improved safety features such as police turnout locations along Ritchie Canyon for vehicles to be pulled over, or for police cars to station themselves to monitor speed and safe driving practices. Finally, the dedication of these 227 acres of open space that remain in Loma Linda's sphere of influence, this would be maintained as open space in perpetuity, never to be developed, and the protection of those ridge lines and view sheds would comply with the spirit of Measure V in our opinion. We're happy to take questions from council members or others, but that, at this point, concludes our formal presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other people wishing to make a comment? Yes, I'm getting the nod.
Okay, Ovi, you are unmuted.
Well, thank you. Everybody can hear me?
We might need to turn the volume up a little bit on you.
Is that any better?
No.
Maybe I just need to speak louder.
There you go.
Good evening. I wasn't thinking that I was going to come in front of you so quickly after leaving office, but after watching the last council meeting and being actively involved in this particular issue, I thought it would probably be appropriate for me to make a few comments. Just bear with me a little bit because I want to kind of go a little bit over the history of my involvement as it relates to Measure V, just to make sure that, you know, Mr. Jindal and Dr. Leonard and Dr. Daley, who was not involved in the original discussion on this issue about three years ago, may want to find informative. I've been working on Measure V since 2005. A good friend of mine at the time, Mr. Circle, was working on it, and when I found out what he was working on, I joined his effort, and there was another lady, Kathy Glanridge, with her mom, Georgia. And I became so involved that I actually started helping draft some of it, and we spent hours looking at what we were going to do and what land was going to be involved and how we were going to go about it. I was one of the first people who really promoted that this measure, not just deal with the hills, but actually deal with the rest of the city as well, because there was a lot of outcry at the time about high-density housing and this effort by developers to put in a lot of, actually apartments and things like that. So, we started the process, and I was one of the people who went door-to-door, and myself and about 40 other volunteers, we collected 2,900 signatures. And we campaigned our hearts out, and the developers spent beaucoup bucks, and we were able to pass the measure. Most people agreed with us. In that whole battle, I wrote dozens of articles in the paper. In fact, I happened to look at one just the other day, and one of the things that we did with the measure was, we made sure we exempted Loma Linda University from it, because we felt that Loma Linda, being a very important employer and contributor of health care and education, should not be singled out in their ability to expand. We thought that it was very important, and the people agreed with us. While the developers did not, and they sued us on that, and this is after the measure passed. Of course, at the time, the city council was full of folks who had done a lot of contributions for developers, so they didn't really defend at all the measure. So, the group actually put money out of their own pocket to defend it, and they, you know, they tried really hard to, you know, win, and they even tried to subpoena me for a deposition just to incur costs to the whole battle, and they were unsuccessful, and the court agreed with us that the measure was valid, and it didn't violate any constitutional protections. After that, I was very active in recruiting. Most of the council members are there mostly because I wanted to make sure Measure V was defended. The only person who actually wasn't involved was Mr. Jindal. So, while I was on the council for 12 years, I would say I was probably the person who was trying the most to make sure that Measure V was protected, and any project that was going to happen in Loma Linda adhered to it and fell within the spirit of what we were trying to achieve. Just to kind of summarize, we have to remember that Measure V's goals is, it impacts the whole city, but the bottom line for Loma Linda is that we want Measure V to protect it from being overdeveloped. And how do you go about doing that? Well, we made sure that developers had to address traffic impact fees beyond what they would normally do, and of course, that was another reason they sued us. We also wanted to make sure the houses weren't going to be too cramped together, and they would be at least 700 square foot lot sizes. We wanted to make sure, as it relates to the hills, that there wasn't going to be any high-density housing on the north-facing slopes, meaning we did not want to be able to look at the hills from the freeway and to just see houses everywhere. And that was really the main, main goal as it related to the hills. Another huge part of Measure V was, we wanted to make sure that Centimeteo Canyon and Ritchie Canyon did not have any road that's straight through Loma Linda. So, that was a very important component of what we were trying to achieve. As it relates to the hills, I have to tell you, I'm an avid supporter of what we do over there. Because of the land that we purchased, and some of it was donated, we have, you know, thousands of people are using the hills, and I'm one of them. I probably hike with my family, you know, at least a half a dozen times a year. I think the last time I was there was actually lost for about 45 minutes because I went too deep inside, and there's no cell phone coverage, so you're really in trouble over there if you get hurt. I've mountain biked, I have plenty of friends and families that mountain bike on a regular basis. Most of the people who use the hills for recreational use do so from Holdup Brook Park. Not to say that they don't go to the far west, but if they do, they're really basically hiking on private property, and as far as we know from the city, all we hear is some complaints of folks who are mostly using motorcycles to, you know, deal with that part of the hills. So, you know, it's a catch-22. It's great that we're getting more land, but at the same time, it's more responsibility for us as a city to make sure that people don't get hurt over there. We actually have a gentleman who, believe it or not, passed away in those hills, in that particular area, simply because nobody knew where he was, and he went hiking, and it took a couple of days before someone actually found him. So, there's always a catch-22 about using the hills. Now, that's just a general idea of Measure V, what it was trying to achieve and my involvement. As it relates to this land, I was personally involved, and I did so because I was part of a group saving Loma Linda, and at the time, the landowner was a different landowner, and they were trying to negotiate with us about what they could be doing with their land as it relates to Measure V. The only thing that Measure V actually addressed their land was the road system. That land was already under the 96 Initiative. We were willing, as we negotiated with the landowner, to increase the density of that land, in meaning that they could put in more houses that would otherwise not be allowed, under the condition that whatever road they build could not connect to Ritchie Canyon. They would not agree to that. So, after hours of negotiations, those broke down. But for us as a group, we felt that the road system was an important portion of what we were trying to do over there. So, when I approved us looking at this land to go to Colton, I did so knowing that I didn't believe it was violating Measure V, because there was nothing that they were going to do there that was going to impact us. In fact, it was actually going to help us, it was going to actually give us more place to hike, but it wasn't going to impact us as it relates to traffic, what we saw. So, in my view, the idea of having Colton take care of it because of the utilities that they had to provide makes perfect sense. As it relates to the project itself, I don't know enough about it to really comment on it. I agree with some of the other comments before. I think the council may want to listen to the EIR and see what it says before drawing any conclusions as to what type of impact it has on Loma Linda directly. But from a Measure V perspective, I believe that we are doing everything we can to protect it, and it does not violate it, nor will it, if they do do any projects there in the future. That was it. Thank you.
Hey, Ovi, can I ask you a question real quick?
I'm listening.
Okay. Hey, who were the three original signers on the Measure V initiative?
I think it was...
I can tell you if you don't know. It was Wayne Isaf, Jay Galant, and Georgia Hodgkin, and all three of them have indicated they are not supportive of this project as they believe it violates their vision of Measure V.
Well, all I can tell you is that, in my mind, I...
Right, but they're the three that signed the Measure V initiative to get it started. And I know you campaigned a lot for it, and were a big part of that, but, I mean, as the three people that signed the paperwork to get it going, in their opinion, this violates the idea of Measure V and could lead to other changes, correct?
I can't speak for them. All I can tell you is that I'm an advocate of what we're trying to achieve, and those who, I guess have a different opinion, I have not, they haven't come up to oppose it, other than perhaps talk to you about it, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Hello, this is Dory Morgan. Am I next up?
Yes, Dory, you're unmuted now. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and members of the public, I also worked for the approval of Measure V. I also went door-to-door and asked for signatures in front of a large storefront to Loma Linda. And I have a different perspective from Mr. Papescu. At the October 2017 Loma Linda City Council meeting, we learned that the developer, Arizona University Realty, contacted each council member individually and shared their annexation and development plans, and received positive support from four of the five councilmen, all conducted prior to the formal council meeting. This contact violated the California State Brown Act, a law, which in summary says, "Councils exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly, that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people do not yield their sovereignty to agencies which serve them. The people do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments that they have created." The council could have tabled this discussion for a future meeting, allowing residents to speak, yet it did not. Due diligence was not done here. The developer said that the proposed project would help meet Loma Linda's housing needs by providing two-hundred-and-fifty homes. After the council approved the sphere of influence change, they increased it to three-hundred-and-fifty homes. Another deception. They stated that your vote to allow a sphere change for the hillside was only, quote, "a baby step in a process that did not pledge a future commitment for annexation and development," unquote. Yet, it caused two laws to be violated. Measure V is the second, and the council set a dangerous precedent. Measure V states the hillside areas are important to the community and shall be preserved in as natural a state as possible, not to be annexed. The council has a responsibility to care for the entire city. Your focus was misplaced on Loma Linda University, which will financially benefit from the donor's gift of thirty percent of the profits. The donor is a well-known Arizona, not California, real estate and zoning law attorney. You were deliberately misled again. He and the developer will not be exposed to excessive traffic this project will cause on Barton Road. Their focus is profit-only. Don't trust them to follow through on the dollar donation as they repeatedly misled you. In July, thirty-six voices opposed this project. Only two were in favor, and they represented the developer. There was no need to delay this discussion, yet the council did, exposing an apparent bias. The council swore an oath to enforce the laws of our city and state, including our community's general plan. I took the same oath as the City of Loma Linda Planning Commissioner. Once the LAFCO annexation process begins, when LAFCO presents this project to the Loma Linda City Council, please ask the city staff to place this on the council agenda and officially deny the request for annexation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Developer Mark Staff has his hand raised again. Mark, do you have a comment for us?
Well, I wanted to comment on something that Ovi had mentioned when he was talking about the developer suing the city. I wanted to make it clear, that was not us. We did not, the city, we were not involved in anything that had anything to do with the lawsuit. I think the term developer is used pejoratively and categorically. And I would also say that if you read the transcript of the hearing that was just referenced, you'll find that many of those things that were mentioned are in fact not factual.
Could you enubrate which ones are not?
So, I think we never did mention having units, first of all. Second of all, I don't believe that the Brown Act violated or attorney was involved. Every citizen and every landowner has their ability to talk to council members independently. We in no way violated the law. We're very careful about it. Now, people may have a perception of it, but that is not in fact the case.
Okay. Was that, that it, or?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have Danny Payne. Danny, I requested you to be unmuted. You're unmuted, Danny.
Okay, everybody can hear me, okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, council members and Mayor Deuce for taking my comments tonight. I am one of the speakers that resides in Ritchie Canyon, and part of the reason for making that clear is, like many of my neighbors, we consider ourselves members of the Loma Linda community. I moved to Loma Linda twenty years ago, met my wife here, began to raise a hearing here. We go to church in Loma Linda, send our kids to school there. My wife has worked at the medical center for sixteen years. We moved to Ritchie Canyon five years ago as a family, you, because it was housing. But like many of my neighbors who are in a situation with us to this area, we consider ourselves part of the community. I want to comment tonight specifically on the original 2017 proposal, highlight some of the changes that occurred since then, and pose a few questions that I think are important. In 2017, the proposal in the fall, Randy LeDing and David Saunders' proposal concept, what was described as a high-end development that medical professional...
Hey, Danny, real quick, I don't mean to interrupt, but could you speak up just a little bit?
Yes, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, thank you.
So, the benefits were tied as catering to the medical community, offering land preservation benefits, and a gift to Loma Linda University. There was specific time spent by ASU's representatives explaining how it's common for educational institutions to work together and how ASU's vision is very much community-focused. Mr. Saunders went on to explain the legal aspect and how a sphere of influence agreement would be needed. The process was characterized akin to a first date, quote, "where there is no future commitment whatsoever." Saunders further explained they already held title to the property. When the site plan came out in the fall of 2019, that's when many of us in the community saw the plans, and it was unexpected, I would say. We were expecting a different vision. And the changes that we found within the site plan was the increase in home sizes that has already been referenced, the increase in density. Density, of course, far exceeded Measure V, and even the Ritchie Canyon specific plan, which is much more liberal, at twenty-thousand-square-foot lots. The proposal includes multi-single-family detached rental units, which of course caught our eye and doesn't seem to fit the original characterization. Some of the other changes of note were originally discussing us in the canyon. There was a comment that U-sheds would be protected from Christina Gossi during community meetings, both U-sheds and ridge lines. That has not been the case. The site plan shows that there's two-hundred-feet elevation changes between valley and ridge lines that will be completely leveled. And according to Measure V, that's not allowed, and the same in the Ritchie Canyon specific plan. You can't level areas to that degree and terrace them. So, there's evidence that the topography of the area would be significantly changed. The overall plan became apparent. ASU could not execute their vision in Loma Linda. They couldn't do it in Ritchie Canyon either, according to our zoning standards. So, the Ritchie Del Prado specific plan was born, where they could propose their own zoning standards. The surprise, because it was different than what we expected, prompted other research, and we came up with some questions that we feel need to be answered. Land title records do not match what was stated in 2017. Of the primary parcels that make up the landowner's area, Ovi referenced the landowner, the Hansberger family, I believe is who he was referencing. That's not who the largest parcel was purchased from. Parcel C is the parcel that the majority of the development would go on. That was purchased in March of 2016 for just over eight-hundred thousand dollars. That would indicate its price according to what could be done in Measure V. Somebody saw an opportunity here, and in looking at the title report, it's a real estate and zoning law attorney in Arizona, as another speaker had mentioned. In the fall of 2016, that landowner, not ASU, applied to the county for a redrawn lot line. And that lot line is now what matches the footprint for the largest portion of the development. The largest portion of the development would go on a property that was purchased in March of 2016. This is not a case of a donor that ASU happened upon that owned land for a long period of time and could not develop because of Measure V. They bought the land in 2016, and a few months thereafter came to Loma Linda proposing for a sphere of influence change so that we could develop it. I want to mention the point of Loma Linda University and a gift. There's a number of community members in my area that work at Loma Linda. In fact, we submitted a letter tonight that comes from seventeen different physicians that are in this neighborhood and committed to Loma Linda. They are affected by this. We had multiple people going to the highest levels of Loma Linda to clarify whether their opposition to this would be a conflict of interest. Multiple times, the owner from the very top at Loma Linda University has been, we have not been approached by ASU about any gift. I want to touch on, it was mentioned that there's an agreement for access through another landowner's property in Ritchie Canyon. We are told by Colton that ASU is the property owner. That's not to say they can't develop other pieces of property, but it bears the point that the decisions that are made tonight or in the future bear a precedent for how hand-use development occurs in the canyon. There are other plans at play here. So, I want to finish with a few questions. Given the title record, who are the parties to this transaction? When did the title change hands, if at all? If it hasn't changed hands, is title change contingent on annexation or some future event? What caused the changes from the initial portrayal upon which Loma Linda Council placed their vote back in 2017? This is not the same proposal. How will Loma Linda University benefit financially? There has been no agreement apparently put in place. And I want to close on a final point. Allowing a developer to remove land from Measure V's boundary sets a legal precedent that others may leverage. Where technically, where I'm at, I'm not a Loma Linda voter, but I have significant concerns over the land that I use frequently after the last twenty years about what sort of precedent this sets. What's to stop other developers from doing the same thing? Those conclude my comments.
Thank you.
We have another comment from the developer, Mark Staff.
I just want to clarify a few things that Danny had mentioned. One is the land that we've referenced in the canyon that we are negotiating a access through is not owned by University Realty. It's not owned by Arizona State University. It's owned by a private party. The land in question, the four-hundred-and-thirty acres, is titled to University Realty. Now, there are a couple of different LLCs that had been involved. I believe that they consolidated. But University Realty is the sole title owner to that property. The history of how it was purchased by the donor, I'm not familiar with. And frankly, I don't know that it's relevant to this decision-making. What I do know is it was purchased by an attorney in Arizona. He's not a land attorney, by the way. He is a litigator of sorts, but is a major donor to the university and has been for many, many, many years. So, he's purchased this, gifted it to us. He intends for the university to be able to generate revenue to be used for academic purposes. The discussions with Loma Linda University have been had. That particular donor had given a gift to Loma Linda University for something completely different. He was in a position where he wanted to see not only ASU benefit, but he wanted to see Loma Linda University benefit from the revenue that could be generated from this property. And so, as part of his gift to us, there was a request for a gift from us to Loma Linda University. That's what's referenced. If there are questions about any of this, the whole purpose of the review process is for us to be able to address these matters so that we can be clear. What's happening is ad hoc. And we would prefer the ability to be comprehensive in the review and have a discussion about all of the aspects of this potential project. Simply because we have made the proposal doesn't mean that that's what Colton would approve. We still have to negotiate with them, and it has to be based upon what the City of Colton is willing to accept, and the benefits that they see, and the impacts that we will mitigate. So, our ask is please let this process continue the way the public process has been intended to proceed. Thank you.
Next up is Jeffrey. You're unmuted, Jeff.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So, I am a student. I go to University of California Riverside, but I do live in Loma Linda, and I have been a resident here for quite some time. Going over kind of like a history of my, my history with the Loma Linda hills, the South Hills. You know, on Saturdays, a lot of residents in Loma Linda typically go into the hills to exercise, you know, seek peace, or do whatever they want back there. A lot of people exercise during the week using the bike trails, walking trails, and everything like that. So, the South Hills are obviously, in Loma Linda, a very common place for people to go to just be in nature. There's not too many places nearby where we can do that freely, where you can do that without having to drive very far. So, for Loma Linda residents specifically, the South Hills are a very valuable place for us. There has been a lot of things that I've heard during this meeting, specifically from the land developer, which are quite concerning. The land developer has presented a lot of, quote-unquote, "improvements" to be made, but none of them necessarily point towards Loma Linda receiving those improvements. A lot of this development for the housing development that they plan to build seems to be towards the City of Colton, which gives no benefit to the City of Loma Linda. The only, the road that it will be basically connecting the housing project to Ritchie Canyon Road will only provide just a very small impact to the already very bad traffic situation that goes through Ritchie Canyon, and that also backs up into Barton Road. That is not going to fix the issue. There's not much you can exactly do with Ritchie Canyon Road, simply because it's a one-lane road that does not support expansion. There's not too much that you can do, other than building streets off to the side, which isn't going to do much, because a lot of people are not just going into Ritchie Canyon. They're going past Ritchie Canyon into Marina Valley, because they work in Loma Linda or the surrounding area. My concern is that the annexation of land will support the further traffic issue, providing more residents to the area in the South Hills to be coming through Ritchie Canyon, which will only make the traffic conditions worse here in Loma Linda. We have a huge traffic issue, as said by a gentleman at the beginning of this meeting. He has a traffic issue on Beaumont Avenue. We have a traffic issue on Barton Road. That will only get worse if there's more people accessing Ritchie Canyon. The access to Ritchie Canyon uses a lot of... The access to Ritchie Canyon uses a lot of Barton Road, simply because it gets so backed up. I live over by Oakwood Drive. It backs up way past Oakwood Drive, further towards the hospital, to the point where things are backed up at around 5:30, things are backed up until about like 6:30, 7 o'clock. Bumper-to-bumper traffic. We do not need more people using these roads going into Ritchie Canyon. Now, another point that I wanted to make is, when we start taking a look at Measure V, Measure V was enacted to preserve land in the South Hills of Loma Linda, specifically so that residents of Loma Linda can enjoy those hills for whatever they may choose to do. When we start considering annexing land, that sets a precedent, a very bad precedent, to start giving away land to land developers, other cities, to develop. If we approve, basically, the annexation of land now, which goes against Measure V, we will only be setting precedent for more land to be annexed in the near future, and for basically the Measure V to become obsolete. We cannot start approving annexation of land, because if we start that precedent now, there will be houses being built all into the South Hills of Loma Linda if we start that precedent now. So, I, there was one last issue that I wanted to raise, is something that the developer just mentioned briefly here, was a donation to Loma Linda University from this whole development process. There are several city council members that are still closely, have a close relationship with Loma Linda University Health and its entities, and I believe that it would be very unethical for those city council members to be voting on this measure or this process. I believe it's more than half of the city council members are in close relationships with Loma Linda University and Loma Linda University Health. Loma Linda University is already contributing to a large part of our issues here in the city, which mostly is traffic, and their employees should not be voting on decisions that will ultimately financially benefit them versus the residents of Loma Linda who clearly do not want this land to be annexed in favor of Measure V. That is all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Kevin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you can, Kevin.
Thank you so much for taking my comments, Mayor Duper, as well as the council and members of the public. My name is Kevin Bali, and I just wanted to start off by saying that I also am a resident of the city of Colton. However, I consider myself to be a member of the Loma Linda community. I moved to Loma Linda in 1993 and lived there until 2016, when I moved to the Ritchie Canyon community of Crystal Ridge. Like many other Loma Linda residents, my family and I felt that this was an opportunity for slightly more space and housing that we were not able to find at that point in Loma Linda. But for twenty-seven years, I have been a member of the Loma Linda community, my medical training there. I've been on staff at the medical center since 2002, and for the last three years, I've been the chairman of the Department of Gynecology and Obstetrics. I'm familiar with many, many people in the city of Loma Linda, as well as a number of the council members. My children have gone to school at Loma Linda Academy, and I've been a member of the Loma Linda University Church for the last twenty-seven years. So although I am not a voting member and a voting citizen in the city of Loma Linda, I do believe that I can speak with some authority on members of that community. I would like to just start out by saying that the comments I'm making will go along the lines of urging the council to consider carefully support of any future annexation. I do appreciate the information that's been brought forward today about the process, and we may be a little early to have any type of process stop at this point, it's not clear, but I would say that if an annexation hearing by LAFCO comes up, I would urge the city council to oppose that. I think, as I have reviewed the process that's been happening here, I took very careful time to review the city council meeting in October of 2017, when the Sphere of Influence Amendment was proposed and approved by the city council. And I do have some quotes from that that I'd like to share. I think the first set of comments revolves around something that other people have said, which is the assurance that the city council would have many opportunities to back up, cancel, rescind, or comment on any further steps. Randy Levin, the CEO of University Realty, said, and I quote, "We look at what are the community needs and what are the community wants." He also said, quote, "We're never, we are not ever trying to force anything down any community's throat, that's not our position at all." David Saunders said, "I'm going to describe what we're asking for, a little bit like a first date. There's no commitment whatsoever to any sort of future relationship. We're taking just baby steps in a process that could result in this property in question coming to the city of Colton for further development." And I think it's been well pointed out tonight that this is one opportunity, at least, for the city council to have some input from the citizens of Loma Linda or from the community members of Loma Linda at large. I think, I would urge the city council to consider the question, what is it that the citizens of Loma Linda truly want? And I really do appreciate the speaker just before me, who is mentioning a number of things. From the August, sorry, from the October 2017 city council meeting, I did pull one quote from, at that time, Mayor Rigsby, and he said this, quote, "I've done my homework, I've gone around and asked a bunch of people, including the major proponents of Measure B, what do you guys think of the southwest corner of Loma Linda? Do you care? And the answer is, not really. It's not a place where people of Loma Linda usually hike. I don't believe that corner has much value to the citizens of Loma Linda. That corner is geographically, culturally Colton, not Loma Linda." So, my question tonight is, I wonder if that is still the will of the people of Loma Linda, and if that's really what they think. Would they want a substantial increase in the hikers and riders from a new development in this area to infiltrate further into the hills of Loma Linda? And what about the fact that Crystal Ridge in Colton is in large part culturally Loma Linda? Finally, I would say that it's a large assumption that the voters in Loma Linda would not care about the property in question, but let's just assume for a moment that they didn't care. They would, if, at the very least, they might ask, okay, we're going to give away some of our land to Colton, what is it that we get in return? And so, again, looking at the benefits to the citizens of Colton, I would simply say, these benefits are really vacuous, in my opinion. A couple of other quotes about the benefits, according to Mr. Saunders for the city of Loma Linda. One, he says, "In this first baby step, you're not committing to an eventual annexation of the property whatsoever. LAFCO will hold a hearing. As the affected city, I believe your voice has the strongest weight of LAFCO, they're not interested in taking property away from cities without the city's consent." That is not a benefit. It's nothing more than a statement of fact. Number two, second benefit, if the annexation was to go forward, you would pay relief from your obligation to provide city services. My question is, what is the current obligation of Loma Linda to provide services to this area that has not been stated? And if development were to be carried forward in the light of what is allowed under Measure V, would those services be possible? Third benefit, quote, "Because the geographic isolation of this property, any future residential development will have very limited impact on your residents. They will not see or be affected by this development whatsoever. There will be no physical access into the city of Loma Linda from this project," unquote. My question is, how is this a benefit? With residential development in this area currently significantly limited by Measure V, there's currently no impact to Loma Linda citizens. Going from no impact to limited impact is not a benefit, it's a step backwards for the citizens of Loma Linda. Furthermore, citizens of Loma Linda who enjoy hiking and riding in this particular area would be impacted more than a limited amount. Leaving things as they are continues to result in no impact to hikers and riders. Mr. Saunders went on to describe about three or four other benefits, but for the sake of time, I will not go into them. The last comment I would say is the mitigation strategies that were mentioned, specifically about a loop road going from Ritchie Canyon Drive westward toward Barton Road would have no significant mitigating impact on traffic backing up into Loma Linda. It would only impact traffic coming onto Ritchie Canyon Road from perhaps Grand Terrace or Western Colton, or traffic going from Marino Valley up through this new loop road into West Colton or into Grand Terrace. And fire impact mitigation would not be needed if a development was not, further fire mitigation would not be needed if a development was not grown in this area. That concludes my comments, thank you so much.
Thank you. How many more folks are scheduled for comment?
We've got two more, and then also a comment from Mark.
I know that a couple of our councilmen are eager to respond, and I don't know if, Dr. Rigsby, you want to wait, or do you want to jump in now? Okay, I'm getting the, I'm getting the motion that we'd like to finish the remainder of the public comment, and then it sounds like there might be some comments here from the dice.
Okay, Michael, you are now unmuted.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I want to echo the comments by the prior speakers, and I'll try not to repeat myself. I just wanted to ask one question as I begin, it's more, not a question that anyone's going to answer perhaps, but why is there a need for this land to go to Colton? Why not develop the land as it is within Loma Linda? Certainly, there may be issues regarding city services, perhaps, or is it perhaps the limitation that Measure V imposes in terms of the density of housing that may be built on the land? And if that is the case, then I want, I urge you all to go see what the developer has on their website, and just for the sake of it, if you want to see it now, it's richicanyon411.com. And you will be able to see that they're planning on building three hundred and fifty single-family detached houses, and the lot size is a little over four thousand feet, where basically you can build about ten houses per acre. So forgive me, but, you know, if I'm not going to call this low-income housing, I will call it high-density housing. So, that is a great way to get around the intent of what the voters sought to protect in those hills. If you are also looking at Measure V, Measure V mentions that neither the number of residential land use designations, nor the maximum residential density standards set forth in this Chapter 2A shall be increased without a vote of the people. And instead, the council is saying, well, there's one way we'll get around the vote of the people, let's just give up this land, and we don't have to deal with it. Well, this provides a really good way forward for others to kind of get around some of the Measure V requirements. And as you sit and ponder about these, think about three hundred and fifty dwellings in a high-density area in a fire coming. I don't care what pond you have, dipping pond for helicopters, none of that is going to be helpful during that situation where major fire comes in. And sure, you may say, well, some of the land is going to be, two hundred and twenty-seven acres are going to be given to Loma Linda as a park, but don't forget, as much as, you know, you are worried about providing city services to the remaining two hundred and seven, you would still have to provide some city services to the two hundred and twenty-seven acres that you can't access from Loma Linda. And in case of a fire, who is going to be caring for some of them? I thank you for your time, I just want to finish with one item. Code 56751 does state that the city can request termination of proceedings no later than sixty days from when a meeting is set, but it doesn't set a limit how far ahead you can do it. So, right now, the city can send a request, a termination of proceedings, and that is what I would urge the council to consider. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask the speaker a question? Okay. Mr. Samardja, this is former Mayor Rigsby. I have a question for you, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Thank you. If there were a fire coming from the west into and up Crystal Ridge, would you like or not like having an escape route through Prado Lane?
So, if I'm looking at where a fire will likely come, it will not be coming from the west, it will be coming from the east. And I think all of the plans that suggest that is where the worst case will come is from the east, not from the west.
And would you rather have one route of egress or two?
But again, you know, Mr. Counsel, if you're looking at my way out, our way out, is Ritchie Canyon one way or the other? You're not providing any way into Loma Linda for us to escape, you know, you're not. I still have to loop around and get in Ritchie Canyon, and how the heck are we going to get out of Ritchie Canyon anyway, under such circumstances?
Very easily, Mr. Samardja, when there's a fire running through the canyon, the people from Marino Valley are not plugging your streets. So Ritchie Canyon Road will only have the Colton people, which is twenty percent. So you're saying that that would cause, you're saying that that would cause congestion with only twenty percent of the peak traffic?
And you are assuming that the fire will occur only during off-peak hours, is that right?
Do you think that if there's a fire ripping through the hills, that people from Marino Valley would be traversing Ritchie Canyon Road? And they're eighty percent of the traffic during peak times, correct?
They may, I don't know, right?
Well, your argument is that you're landlocked and you can't get out in a fire, and that this project will make it even worse, but the thing about a fire is that the eighty percent through traffic would not be coming through. So, that's why you need to do traffic studies and not just speculate.
That's wonderful, and I'm not in a position to commission a traffic study, but the speculation is not there, Mr. Counsel.
But the speculation is not there, Mr. Counsel. And when you're looking at 350 single-family houses built in a tiny bit of land, this is not what Measure V was about. Is that right?
That's right, but that's a proposal, and Ritchie Canyon is under the sphere of influence of Colton. And they're the ones who will adjudicate that, and it's not for us to decide. I have one more question for you.
Saying is that although currently Loma Linda and Measure V currently would not allow for this, the proposal is to make it a high-density housing in Colton, and then you guys don't care? Thank you for clarifying.
I have another question for you. Some of the speakers are saying that the project is deficient because of issues regarding donations to the university. I find that interesting, that half of the speakers say that the project is deficient because the donation will not go to Loma Linda University. And the other half says it's deficient because it will go to Loma Linda University. Which side do you, are you with?
I know for a fact that currently, there are absolutely no agreements that any of the proceeds will be going to Loma Linda University. So as it pertains to a current conflict of interest, there is not. Otherwise, I wouldn't be speaking as an officer of Loma Linda University.
Okay, then my question, having concluded that, my question is, does that make the project have less benefit to Loma Linda as a community because there is no commitment to the university? Or does that have no bearing?
That has no bearing. I mean, just keep in mind, I'm a Colton resident. But from my perspective, it has no bearing.
Okay, we have one more speaker? Okay, one more speaker.
And then the developers wish to speak. Jeanette Lewis. I just requested unmute you.
Good evening. Thank you for taking time to hear the citizens' comments. I am wanting to confirm a couple of questions and then comment. A couple of questions. One, I would like to verify that road created into the city of Loma Linda directly. And then, secondly, when I get done with my comments, I will ask the question, how does this benefit the taxpaying citizens of Loma Linda? So far, I haven't heard anything this evening other than the benefit of land that we already own that could be developed, as previous speakers have mentioned, if the city chooses to without the help of the developer or the city of Colton or whoever else is involved in this project? So a couple of things. I am a citizen of Loma Linda, living in the southwest region that was noted by a Week 1 City Council member as an unimportant area to the residents of Loma Linda. It consists of dentist, physicians, and professors at LLUH. They're also people that work from those thousands are not affiliated with LLUH or the university. My point is, we too pay taxes. I pay $9,000 a year in taxes at $750 a month. To live in the city of Loma Linda, my zip code is 92354, just like every other citizen. So just because I live in a certain section of the city, it does not mean that we are any less important or should have any less of a say-so than people living in other sections of the city. Traffic is already unbearable during certain hours of the day. You cannot get access to your home. If you need to go home and pick someone up or grab something and then go out again, don't try and do so in the morning hours or in the evening hours around shift change at the hospital. So that's why my question about the roads, and even if there isn't a road being developed into Loma Linda, this will still impact, as previous speakers have noticed, the traffic that is going to Ritchie Canyon. Either those that are going to live in these 350 homes or those that are traveling to Moreno Valley. People use that as an access road, and this will just increase the amount of traffic. And I guess the two questions I would ask the panel is, benefit to the citizens of Loma Linda, what are they? I haven't heard any yet. Regardless of whether money is donated to LLUH or LLU or not, I don't really care. I want to know, as a taxpaying citizen, how will we benefit? And then if you could answer the question about the vote. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think your first question, if you just referenced that right now, it was kind of muffled. I don't think we heard it. Did you ask a question about a vote?
No. If you could answer the question about a road directly into Loma Linda-
Okay, road. Yeah, Measure V precludes any roads being directly built into or connecting to any of our existing roadways in Loma Linda. So that's problematic for anybody who would want to develop under Measure V standards. And since none of that adjacent area would be annexed in this proposal, that would likely never happen. You know, there is development that's allowed under Measure V, but it's a lot less dense, like was mentioned before. And what I think, as my personal opinion, is the reason why developers don't look at that is it doesn't pencil out financially for them to develop under that type of restriction. And so, so anyway, so, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just trying to clarify that question.
No, I appreciate your answer. And I would like to respond to that by saying that you referenced Measure V. But if we really stood behind Measure V, I don't think we would be here this evening, correct? Discussing this matter. Because I voted on Measure V. And we wouldn't even be having this conversation if we were up against Measure V. So I guess we can't reference what's in that measure because it doesn't seem like that we're adhering to it and respecting the votes of the citizens of this town.
Well, and this is where I have to, I do want to make a comment. And it's unfortunate, it's a little bit of self-preservation here. But it was brought up earlier on the dais that some folks here on the dais were a little concerned about some of the comments that were made earlier. I would say, although we have to stand behind decisions that are made, popular or not popular, depending on the vote, there are individual council members here that have individual opinions specifically on this issue. And so I just want to make sure that everybody watching understands all of that. And you may or may not agree with each of our individual opinions, which is, which is fine, that's the democratic process. We all shouldn't be lumped into one particular opinion or position on this. Is there any other public comment? There is another one. Is that from the developer? No, we have some other folks lining up.
Could we just address my second question?
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna take some liberty here and just give my opinion. I'm obviously keenly aware of this whole project because I was approached as a council member by this developer several times prior to our meeting in October of 2017. The developer desperately tried to get in contact with each council member here, and I'm not sure of their success or not success, unsuccessful. But I engaged in some email communication with the developer, trying to figure out exactly what the purpose of the meeting was for. And I can tell you, as a law enforcement officer, the nature of the communication that started with this particular attorney representing the developer got me very concerned. However, I am submitting an email chain, which is obviously public information. All of our emails are. I'm going to submit this into the record tonight, which is an email conversation with Mr. Saunders. And I will just read this. "Mr. Duper, after we went back and forth a couple of times, Mr. Duper, here's the background on the proposal. My client, University Realty LLC, a private nonprofit entity, is a real estate development entity whose sole mission is to support Arizona State University. It controls about 430 acres in the Loma Linda Hills, all of which are encumbered by Measure V. I took that to mean, we can't do anything with this because it's encumbered by Measure V, and we want to talk to you about how to get out of that. The northeasterly 227-acre C attached map, these 227 acres are visible to the city of Loma Linda residents as a northern slope of the Loma Linda Hills. University Realty's proposal is to convey this property to the Loma Linda South Hills Preserve or other appropriate conservation entity for perpetual use for open space and trail purposes, provided that the adjacent 203 acres are annexed to the city of Colton for residential development." That, again, pushed me back on my heels. That appeared to be trying to negotiate around an existing law here in our city. And forgive the spelling and grammar errors, I didn't, this was not my portion of the email. So judge that for yourself. Again, from the attorney, Mr. Saunders. "The southwesterly 203 acres C attached map, these 203 acres of land are on the Colton side of the Loma Linda Hills. They are now in the city of Loma Linda but are not directly visible from the city of Loma Linda below. Its geographic location effectively precludes the city of Loma Linda from providing necessary and required public services to it. The proposal is to amend Colton's sphere of influence to incorporate this property and eventually annex it to the city of Colton for, excuse me, for single-family residential development in Colton, since Colton already has the infrastructure to provide the necessary public services. Vehicular access will be Ritchie Canyon. No vehicular circulation or utility access will be made through the city of Loma Linda. After development, entitlements are obtained. The land will be sold to one or more home builders. University Realty will donate the net proceeds from the sales to Arizona University Foundation, a third of which will be donated to Loma Linda University." I'm going to break from the email here to make a comment. In that October of 2017 council meeting, Mr. Saunders would not admit to that, and I had to drag it out of him. And that further set me on my heels that this particular developer was not being honest with this council as they appeared in front of it. I don't care for dishonest people. "To start things off, the city of Colton and Loma Linda will be asked to send a letter to San Bernardino LAFCO requesting commencement of a sphere of influence amendment. Of course, numerous applications and approvals will be required for the annexation and development entitlements. I'd like to meet with you, Jarb, and Conrad to discuss the proposed project. Thanks. Dave." David R. Saunders, Clayson, Boehner, and Saunders, 601 South Main Street, Corona, California 92882. And the rest of that is included, and I will add that into the public record. We held a hearing on this matter. My comments were that if this was- My fear with doing any of this, and what we ultimately did, was beginning a slippery slope. The potential, and whether or not people in this city, and obviously, we have heard from plenty of people that are concerned with that, even if it is the remote southwest corner of town. I've been getting emails, text messages for weeks and months leading up to this. The three primary people who signed the Measure V initiative are against this. The fear is that at another time, another council will be susceptible to another request to change Measure V. And we are setting a precedent here. The next question is LAFCO. And I have to give credit to our former mayor. When we issued the letter to LAFCO and requested that sphere of influence change, he actually appeared at the LAFCO committee and requested, please correct me if I'm wrong, requested that they not, they not change the sphere of influence for Scotch Lane. They did anyway. And my fear is with, we all know, LAFCO could even initiate some of this stuff on their own. And it's akin to dancing with the devil. We have started a dance here, and now LAFCO, depending on who those board members are, and they're all susceptible to elections and things just like we are, they can make rulings and make decisions without our input. We started that process, and it got out of control because we lost an area that we didn't really want to give up. I do believe this is doublespeak by the developer in talking about the benefit to Loma Linda, as was brought up by several of the speakers. If it were left alone right now, nothing would change. There is no benefit to us because right now, they can't develop that area, and it is basically open space in the hills. I do agree that Measure V was enacted, and this is not anything personal against anybody on this dais because I highly respect all of my peers here. And we all have difference of opinion. But as I brought up in the October 2017 meeting, if this was, this was a voter, Measure V was a voter initiative law. I don't believe, as council members, we should be making changes to this. I believe if this is that important, we send it back to the voters of Loma Linda to decide. If we enact a law, such as what we did with our drive-through restaurants and things like that, and we later decide that that's something we want to alter, that was a law that we created, and I believe that's within our purview to address. But to go back and change something that the voters initiated, I have a challenge with. I do believe that whether or not this donation to the university is in play or not, I agree with Dr. Rigsby, for the most part, that it's not really pertinent to this. However, I do personally believe that the developer used that as, not that it had any effect on these people here because I believe they're good, honest, ethical people on this dais. But I believe the developer attempted because they thought there are so many council members here that are connected to the university, and the university is such an integral part of this city that if we sweeten this or let them know there is some other benefit, they may be more apt to go for it. And I truly believe that was the intention there. Not that anybody did anything for that reason, but I believe that's what the developer was intending. And again, I would ask that, again, everybody evaluate, all of us, for our own unique experiences and what we bring here to the table in our best effort to try to do the right thing. And with that, I will let go of the microphone. And either, if anybody wants to speak up now, they can, or we can go to the next public speaker.
We have one new comment, and then we have an individual who wishes to speak again, with your permission.
Okay, let's go with the new comment.
Okay, Julie, you are requested to be unmuted. You're unmuted.
Thank you. So I am concerned with this proposal, even if the access is via Ritchie Canyon because of many things that have already been mentioned. However, I would be doubly concerned if this involves access via Richardson Street, as the gentleman from University Realty mentioned. I haven't heard any more discussion of that possibility, and I would like to know if that is really on the table. Because I believe many of my fellow citizens of Loma Linda would be much more concerned if the access would be from this side of the hills. Thank you.
Can I answer that? Measure V very specifically calls out all possible roads, including Richardson Street, not to be connected to Ritchie Canyon under any circumstances. So Richardson Street is completely protected from connection to any, any road that connects to Ritchie Canyon.
Thank you.
Okay, and the follow-up commenter?
No, thanks. Not from my part.
Jeffrey Bones, I requested you to be unmuted. Jeffrey Bones, I requested you to be unmuted. You're unmuted.
So I have some follow-up questions specifically towards Dr. Rigsby, given he seemed very adamant to question a gentleman from the city of Colton. It seems that you're very interested in this development moving forward. And I have a couple of questions regarding some of the comments made tonight. The developer stated that there would, in fact, be a donation to Loma Linda University. He stated that an attorney who has donated to the university in the past would again like to donate a piece of his revenue to Loma Linda University. The gentleman that just finished speaking just a minute ago said that the developer might have attempted to bribe or sway city council members with a possible donation, given their affiliation with Loma Linda University. Do you feel that we, as a city, should even be considering working with these developers if they're- if their intentions seem to be, to be dishonest from the beginning, trying to sway city council members with a donation to their employer, or a, an employer of someone they're affiliated with?
Is that a question for me?
That is a question for you, Dr. Riggsby.
So, is there a donation or not going to the university? I'm puzzled, because I hear opponents of the projects who are connected to the university saying there is no donation, therefore neither he nor we have a conflict. And then I hear people saying, like you, and you seem to be the only one who thinks that a donation to the university is a horrible thing. Everybody else seems to be saying, making their argument that because this putative donation to the university is, is ephemeral and not real, therefore the project doesn't have any benefit to the city of Loma Linda. So I'm trying to figure out, is there a donation or not? And it's clear that you think that a donation to the university is not only a bad thing, but it's a bribe, and it's, it's a horrible thing, and the university is the perpetrator of all traffic in Loma Linda, and therefore is a bad and a malign influence. So exactly where do you stand on this?
I, I never said it was a bad thing. I've never stated that. I think any donations to Loma Linda University are good because it furthers the, the health of the local area and also the education of students that attend Loma Linda University. I am not saying that it's a bad thing. I am saying that the developer did mention earlier that there would be a donation of some kind through the, through one of the owners of land around that area. So I'm saying that the gentleman that just finished speaking earlier said that this donation might have been used to sway the opinions of the city council. So do you feel that we should even be considering dealing with these people, these developers, if they are trying to sway city council meetings, city council meetings by using donations as, as, as sort of like a bribe?
So let me, let me jump in here real quick. This is Phil Duper. That was me speaking, and that is my personal opinion, and I'm not, yeah, I did, this is Phil Duper. I, I am not in any way, in any belief that any of our council members would ever, and again, I, I don't know, but I know, I know these guys pretty well. I don't think that played any part in this. However, it is my personal opinion, the developer approaching the city of Loma Linda, not knowing the city of Loma Linda, being from outside the area such as Arizona, trying to figure out, by looking at Wikipedia, you can see that probably half of us work for the institution and the relationship with the institution. My personal opinion is that was thrown into the initial discussion as a, as a way to sweeten it or make it attractive to the council. I'm not saying that anybody jumped on that because of that, but that's my opinion of the developer. That does not reflect on the council members. And I think we all agree that whether or not there's a donation or not, the institution obviously is a very important part of our town, and I think we're all in favor of anything that they can possibly get. My concern was some of what I believe to be dishonesty in my interaction and direct dealing with the developer and my interaction with them at the council meeting on October 2017. And so that has, has put me very leery of this entire project, their entire purpose, and where we go from here. That coupled with my statements about, once we open the Pandora's Box about Measure V, it, it causes more issues, but we as a council have to vote, and the majority rules, and, and that's where we end up.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I, I have to interject. I'm sorry that you got the impression that people were possibly doing something that was inappropriate. Universities have conversations amongst themselves all the time. There is fair sharing, there is mutual support. That is the only thing that was going on. We are not profit seekers. And I really object to the fact that you are implying in the public record that we are dishonest in trying to bribe with absolutely no basis for that, other than your own.
My basis for that is the October 2017 meeting and my email from your attorney. So at that point, I think we'll cease to discuss this.
Yeah, but there is, there is the ability to support another university.
Okay, comments from the dais?
Okay, I'd like to make comment. With regard to the dishonesty, quote dishonesty, at the October meeting, I looked at that tape, and I perceived that Mr. Saunders on asking, on questioning from you, misunderstood the purpose of your question and answered what he perceived your question to be honestly. And then when you clarified, then he answered honestly. So what you're portraying as dragging it out of him was a misunderstanding that was clarified. And I think, I think that declaring these people to be dishonest is a, is a disservice. And that's just that one issue. I'm still puzzled why anyone would think that a charity receiving a gift of land who considers spreading the wealth of that gift to another charity could be construed as a bribe. I'm, I'm puzzled. And I'm puzzled why that would make an otherwise, you know, assuming that didn't happen, an otherwise acceptable unacceptable project somehow less acceptable. That, that a charity within a community might benefit from a transaction, how that could be a negative? And I'm, I'm just puzzled. I don't, I don't get it. You know, and it's a putative thing. It's not, it's not. Clearly, the fact that I'm still here means it's not a done deal, because, you know, if it were a done deal, I would recuse myself. And half the people are making arguments that this deal is soured by the fact that there isn't a donation, and the other half are making an argument that the deal is soured because there is a donation. And I'm trying to figure out what the truth is and why there's a difference of opinion, and why we would expect that to be a monolithic argument when it's, when it's got completely different perspectives.
I, I don't think the issue is really whether there's a donation or not, and I agree with you that if, if there's a benefit to anybody, I'm okay with that. My issue with that particular topic was how it was used, in my opinion of how it was used, by the developer. And I know you don't share that opinion, which is, which is fine, but.
I'd love, I'd love to watch the video with you and explain the point, the inflection point where I believe the, there was a misunderstanding of your question.
But this was based on me having email communication prior to that also?
Yeah, true.
You know what I mean? So in my mind, the totality.
And I understand that, but I was there at the meeting, and I've watched the tape, and I don't think there was any dishonesty at all.
Well, so moving on from that, I still assert my original claim from that meeting date, that I believe this is an issue, a purposeful way around Measure V that I can't condone. Even if it, even, even if, and I'm not, I'm not one of those people who's saying the southwest corner doesn't matter, because I think it all matters. I would, I'd love to take all of Ritchie Canyon and be part of Loma Linda. I'd love to annex it. Jarb, don't look at me like that. Everybody should live in Loma Linda.
And that's, that's all a fair point. My, but I, I, I want to disabuse you of the concept that the applicant is dishonest, and that you hate dishonest people.
Well, that, that's, that's where my, my personal experience and my dealings with them and in these meetings has formulated that opinion. And so that's my opinion for nobody else. But back to my original concern about Measure V and the slippery slope, that one day, with a future council down the road, somebody approaches us with an awesome deal to build homes right at the end of Holder Crooks Park, and because we've set a precedent, and it's not that big of a deal anymore, and we are not all here anymore, somebody makes a decision like that. And I, my opinion, again, I know it's not shared, is that this should be one of those things. If voters say we're willing to release some of the, some of the Measure V stuff for certain areas of town and that, and we're all good with that, but I have also spoken with the people directly involved in Measure V, the Galants specifically, and, and they were very proud of the fact to be one of the three original signers. And so a lot of people in town are not for it, and, and that's where my position's at.
I've got a few questions, if it's appropriate now. Do we have anybody else trying to get in here?
Jeffrey Bones wants a follow-up.
I think at this point, I think we're going to cut off the public comment and, and the.
Public comment first.
We will finish discussing here on the dais.
So go. I've got, I've got a couple of comments, a couple of questions. First of all, according to my reading of the, and this is, this is directed to the city attorney, the, the agenda item is report and discussion regarding status of environmental review of proposed Rancho Del Prado project off Ritchie Canyon Road in South Hills area, yada, yada, yada. What, what is our intent tonight? What, what are, are we supposed to arrive at a conclusion, or is this simply discussion? Because we've been discussing this for a while now, and I've got comments, but I want to know, what's the end game?
Good evening again. That's an interesting question, because technically there is no action pending for a decision before you that you're required to take. There's no development, there's no development application, entitlement application, or annexation application that has been filed with LAFCO that you would need to act on, or with the city of Loma Linda that you would need to act on. So technically, you're not required to take any action whatsoever tonight.
So this is actually ongoing discussion continuation from two weeks ago?
Yes, it was a matter that was brought up by the public, and it was agendized so that further comments could be taken and a response given, and perhaps some direction to staff. But as I mentioned, it is somewhat premature, or arguably absolutely premature, to take action on any specific proposal that is not before you formally. I wanted to just take a moment also, while I'm here, to respond to a couple of comments that were made regarding the Brown Act. And as you know, we, we train on the Brown Act, and we're pretty strict on, on making sure that we comply with that.
For listeners, can you give a one-sentence description of the Brown Act? I know what you're talking about.
The Brown Act is the open meeting law that prohibits a city council from discussing outside of the public meeting or taking any action that arises to a collective concurrence as to an item that will become, that will be coming before them for action at a future meeting. For instance, it's very common for constituents to express concerns to council members either individually, or sometimes to more than one, about matters of general concern, and that's entirely appropriate, or even about specific projects. If a specific project is going to be agendized at a council meeting, and an applicant has a right to a due process hearing on their application, it's inappropriate to, ahead of time, make any commitment to anybody for or against that project. And it's also inappropriate for a majority of the council to meet and discuss either through electronic means or any other means, the project, and come to a collective concurrence in advance of the meeting. So that's what we avoid. We do not do those things, and I'm not aware of any Brown Act violation having occurred in anything related to this matter tonight. Now, as far as the ethical.
Fairly lengthy sentence. Sounds more like a PhD than a lawyer.
I am a lawyer, so pardon me. Now, on the ethical concerns that have been raised, we're also very careful about those issues, as demonstrated just this evening by the previous action, where we did recuse two council members. So the question presented here is kind of an interesting one, but ultimately, it's impossible to make a determination of potential conflicts of interest until an item comes before you for action, because any determination we made in advance, you know, could be nullified by changes in the project, or agreements, or proposals that have not yet occurred. Now, as far as this, this talk of a, of a donation, there's not a, a contract involved with the city that would bring up government code 1090 at this point. There's no commitment that we're aware of. There was a discussion in an email, apparently, that that was a possibility, but there was no binding commitment on the part of this third-party entity that would rise to that level at this stage.
Can I ask you a question, then?
Yes.
Why did we draw stars in October 2017?
Well, sometimes we do that if the council member feels uncertain or in an abundance of caution. But that, that was a little different situation, because there was a specific proposal, yea or nay, on whether or not we issued a, a letter of support for the change in the sphere of influence. At the point where we receive an application to detach specific property from the city jurisdiction, we would want to go through that whole process again and make that determination based upon the facts that are before us at that time. And that's, again, why this is a little bit premature, because those facts can change.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, I'm Councilman Daley, they need to know who's talking, and so.
Well, it should be all on video.
Well, yeah, but I don't know, everybody that's communicating with us is on video.
Okay. This is Phil Duper.
Okay.
And my question to you, sir, is, could we, by a, a motion tonight, make a motion as a council to reconsider and send a new letter to LAFCO stating we reconsider our position on the area of influence?
Well, you could direct staff to bring back that item for consideration at a future meeting. The reality is LAFCO already took that action.
Okay, but can they undo that action legally?
If somebody were to apply to change the sphere of influence, I suppose they could in the future, but.
Okay, so what we did before is not something we couldn't repeat again?
If there were a new application presented for action, you could weigh in on that new application, but at this point, there is no new application to weigh in on.
Could we send a letter to LAFCO asking LAFCO to reconsider their move of sphere of influence, both changing this project location and Scotch Lane?
Well, that was not agendized for tonight, but you could ask staff to look into that possibility, review the procedures, and bring it back for possible action at a future meeting.
Okay.
So to finish what I was saying, I'm not aware of any conflict of interest issues at this point as to this level of discussion. If an actual project or application comes before you, that's the appropriate time to review that. Obviously, if there were ever any due process hearings, such as entitlement hearings, it's never appropriate to take a position on that before you get all the facts at the public hearing.
So the way the agenda, this is Councilman Daley, the way the agenda is written is accurate. This is merely report and discussion.
That was the intention, and I'll, I'll take the blame for that agenda item, because I was trying to figure out how to word this in a way that you had some leeway to respond and discuss the concerns that were. the concerns that were being raised by the public. But technically, there is no specific project before you for action tonight, and that was what I also tried to make clear.
Okay, that, that's the impression that I had. Thank you. If I could turn to the city manager and ask him, has there been any communication regarding the issues we've been hearing and discussing tonight between the City of Loma Linda and City of Colton?
Yes, because Conrad met with, you called the, the City Colton staff?
We met with the City Colton staff one time a year, year and a half ago, briefly. I think this was, the application was brought in once before and was rejected by Colton. We have not talked to them about anything on this, this current application or any discussion.
Because if, if, if I'm one of the citizens in this region that we're talking about tonight, you know, I'd be interested to know if the two cities are communicating with each other, or with LAFCO, or if this is just kind of floating.
This is a Colton issue. We are not working or communicating with Colton at all. It's theirs, it's theirs to review and not ours to review.
So this is primarily between LAFCO and Colton, and Loma Linda's not a factor at this point?
This is, there's been an application submitted to the City of Colton for this project.
Okay.
Colton is at the very, very early stages, from what, from what I understand, of reviewing this.
Conrad, could you come up to the microphone, because my fear is that people out there keenly, intently listening are not able to hear you.
Everybody wants to hear what Conrad's saying.
Sorry.
That's better than you can't hold me to it.
No. I want to hold everybody to everything, including myself.
So, yes, we met with Colton a year, a year and a half ago, when there was an original project submitted. Colton reviewed it and rejected it, or very early on, from what I understand. We have not went with them in the last, like I said, year and a half, probably longer. We certainly have not met with them on, in any aspect on this, the current submission. So we, we don't know. From what I do understand from the applicant, is that Colton is in the very, very early stages of the review. And if you remember how we do this here, we, before the review even starts, we hire an outside consultant. We hire environmental consultants that, that the applicant pays for, but the city passes through. They are in the process of the selection of those consultants. So from what I understand, no work has been done on that, is what I'm getting from the applicant.
So basically, what we're experiencing right now, and, and, you know, I, I don't want to phrase this in a way it'll offend anyone, but we have residents who are currently citizens of Loma Linda based on their address, who want to retain that identity. Now, I've got a couple of other points to make here as well, but that's basically what we're talking about right now. And they're saying, control the congestion, and control some of these other things, because we want to remain part of Loma Linda. Is that your, is that why we're hearing from people now, and not Colton?
Well, from, from what I understand, there's a large number of Colton people that we're hearing from as well. I'm sure, and I can't, I can't speak to the motivation of everybody involved. My, I'm speaking from assumptions.
Yeah, that's fair.
That the Loma Linda residents are concerned that there will be an encroachment into the, the western, the northerly facing portion of the hills, that there will be additional traffic, that then in some form or another be a strain on our resources. The Colton residents, I'm, I'm sure are worried about additional congestion, additional housing, water, fire.
The issues that I, and I've been listening carefully and taking some notes, emergency access is a priority for these residents. Fire trucks and ambulances can enter and exit without running into problems.
That, you alluded to, both of us working on the ambulance. I worked in Lido Valley at the station at the top of the hill, and that was an issue in the 90s. It continues to be an issue.
Yeah, yeah. But that's one of the issues we're hearing about tonight, and have heard from before. Traffic congestion, and, and, I mean, I think everybody acknowledges there's a, there's a traffic congestion issue there at, on Barton Road and Ritchie Canyon. But then, I think I heard the developer suggest that there was a plan for new roads with access to Barton Road that would kind of decompress that congestion. Is that your understanding?
From, from what I understand, that's, that is part of their proposal. If, if we were doing, from what little I know of this, okay? If somebody says, I'm gonna put 300-ish houses, and that was part of Loma Linda, a significant part of the review would be how we handle the traffic, either the widening of, or the mitigation of the impact onto Ritchie Canyon. That would be something that who would do? I can't imagine.
We've seen Matt proposing what that would look like.
I don't know what it is, but I, you know, the planner at, at Colton is, is very good and very experienced. I can't imagine he's not asking the same questions.
Okay, okay. Because I, you know, right up to Ritchie Canyon Road is a cemetery, so I can't believe they're gonna cut through the cemetery, so I'm not sure how that would work, but we haven't seen any proposal.
We have not seen anything.
Okay. For a proposal for, okay, I haven't seen that then. On, on what site? You've done better homework than I have. Oh, okay.
That's the first I heard of it tonight. I just looked it up on my laptop.
Leave it to the young guy with the computer.
You talking about him or me?
Ritchie Canyon 411?
I'm hoping you're talking about me.
Of course.
Of course.
Okay, I will look that up. Can you answer my question then? Where's, where's their plan?
It's towards the east side. I don't know the specifics, but there is a road they should... But I think also, hearing someone they said, it's not gonna be, and I might be completely wrong about this.
It might not be a road that's available for all through traffic, and is gonna be used during emergencies. So it's not gonna be something that I...
That's only emergencies. That's not gonna reduce traffic.
I think I have the answer.
Oh, go for it.
I'll show you the map after, after I state it.
He's the young guy with the computer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ritchie Canyon Road currently exits onto, or enters onto Barton Road between Hunts Lane, almost equidistant between Hunts Lane and Cooley Drive.
Sounds right.
There is a cut in the, just west of the western boundary of the cemetery. There is a cut in the hill there that was intended to connect Ritchie Canyon to Hunts Lane. And the proposal is to, is to realign...
And that is off Ritchie Canyon, or, or...
I'll show you the map.
There's two different roads that they have on there.
Yeah. Oh. Okay, well, we would need, when the, when it's appropriate, and obviously, based on what our city attorney just told us, now's not necessarily the appropriate time. But we would need a map and clarification of that from the developer, for sure. But, you know, we've got LAFCO and Colton, and there's so many variables in here, I get confused. And I may not be the brightest bulb in the chandelier, but I usually can keep up okay. And then, again, if I understood the concerns of some of the citizens, the other major concern is the density of the proposed development. Now, again, I, I don't believe I've seen footprints of the lots, but I can, but I can understand that concern on multiple levels, including the added traffic that it would contribute.
I have not seen a lotting plan. I'm sure that would be part of the proposal to Colton. I did hear the developers say that they were talking to about 3,000 or 4,000 square foot houses, which are, I think that's what they said earlier, that which would be 20% larger than the houses of, going in off California Street. And on 7,200 square foot lots, those are pretty snug.
Yeah.
As, as it is, so they would be probably, and, and, once again, I'm speculating, but 7,200 or larger, just to be able to hold, hold the house and get the setbacks.
And, and so that, that's, we're kind of getting to the point that I'm driving at, which is, we're kind of driving in the dark without headlights.
We, at this point, we are speculating on top of speculation. The only, the only guys that have the information is the developers and the Colton Planning Department. And anybody else making judgments is purely guessing.
Let me jump in there with that, though. I have to, I have to speak on that. And let me be real clear here. I don't know where these developers live. They don't live in Ritchie Canyon. They don't live in Loma Linda. And we have heard from Loma Linda residents and Ritchie Canyon residents that live there, that are concerned and they're stressed out. And we all, you, you alluded to it, if this project was in front of us officially, it would take months to go through ERR stuff. I will say this officially, developers are in it for the long game. They will wait, they'll wait us out, they'll wait till there's a new city council. They are making incremental steps. And all of this stuff right here is stressing these homeowners out, and they are living it day to day, and they want resolution. And they are asking us to do something that we, to reverse something that we did three years ago, and, and listen to them and put a stop to this.
And they live in Colton.
And we've heard from Loma Linda residents also, and these are significant people that are important in this community.
There's no one person that's any more important than any other person.
Well, have we heard from any Loma Linda residents that are in favor of this besides you and Ovi?
Has anybody been asked? Does anybody even know it's being discussed?
And, and I, I agree. And I guess that's where I have some concerns, is because I'm not, I mean, I see names here. I've got the names on the list. I've got hard copies of emails and so forth. And I, you know, I take this stuff very seriously. But as Councilman Riggsby is saying, I'm, I'm not sure who I'm talking with either. Now, I can understand how people would be concerned about traffic density that already exists, let alone if we pile a bunch of houses on top of each other in the hills. Like, I can, that's not hard to figure out. And I can see where they would have concerns about emergency access and exit. But again, I don't have any maps, I don't have any pictures, I don't have any proposals, and so I'm listening to people without really knowing what they know. I mean, I'm sure they're, they're sincere about what they've heard, and what their concerns are. But we, we've got to get a little more cognitive about this, and be sure we know exactly what we're dealing with. If there's even a role for Loma Linda to deal with this, right?
The, as it sits now, the role for Loma Linda would be to reject annexation, or approve annexation at that point.
But we don't have that decision in front of us.
That decision, if it, process were running here, it would probably be a year to year and a half out.
And so the people in the, that are affected by this have to constantly keep up with this and worry about it for two years. So let me just say from...
My suggestion, and, and I'm, I'm gonna go off book here, sorry, is that rather than come here, and, and I think everybody on the dais, everybody on staff has clearly heard their concerns, understands their concerns, may or may not, may not agree with all of them, but you're correct, are sensitive to those concerns. But the, the place where the next decisions are going to happen is in Colton. So if, if these individuals really want to be heard, and have some, some action occur, I don't know what night Colton City Council meetings are, but those would be good nights to take off, and spend some time there.
And I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand it, and, and concur. But if I'm a citizen on Bravo, what is it? Bravo, Prado, Prado Lane? I'm saying, if I'm a Loma Linda resident, why am I supposed to go appeal to Colton City Council?
If you're a citizen on Prado Lane, you're not a Loma Linda resident. You're a Colton resident.
Well, give me a better example. Scotch, Scotch Lane.
If you are in Scotch Lane, then, just like that we've heard from a bunch of, of Colton residents who, you know, have, have a voice and have an impact by living, by shopping, working, and commuting to the community,
Yeah.
Colton would hear from a bunch of Loma Linda residents who have the same impact on Colton. We are, we are neighbors, and it's, you know, there, there's no Berlin Wall. It's a fluid border, and people shop and travel and work across that border.
But again, if I live on Scotch Lane, why is that a Colton decision? Why is that not a Loma Linda decision?
Because LAFCO placed Scotch Lane in Colton's sphere of influence.
Because we asked LAFCO to do that. And my point is, we should ask LAFCO to undo it.
We didn't ask LAFCO to change the sphere of influence for Scotch Lane.
No.
We specifically said not, and Colton sent a letter, having voted, they did not want Scotch Lane in their sphere of influence.
Backed.
And LAFCO gave it to them anyway, which tells me that our action in October of 2017 was pro forma. It was unnecessary.
Then we have an opportunity to make a statement or take a stand right now.
Colton made a statement beforehand, and they went against it.
Okay, so let's say we send a letter to LAFCO and saying, we want to undo this, and LAFCO laughs at us. We have done everything that we can legally do, and we've responded to the people here tonight.
I think I would support that kind of letter if it's limited to Scotch Lane. Because we did not send a letter to LAFCO saying, take Scotch Lane. We did not.
And I know, and I know you, you spoke to them, I know you fought that, but it goes back to my original comment about Dancing with the Devil. We opened Pandora's box, and now LAFCO could potentially do whatever LAFCO wants to do, even including if we actually tried to vote against this.
Well, I think it's...
LAFCO's very powerful.
I think it's very pertinent, what was said at the beginning of this presentation from the, from the developer, or whatever you want to call them, the charity that owns that property. He said that this area was, and I had never heard this before, and I want to find out if it's true. Did we annex that section of the hills in 1989?
I'd have to do the research. I know that we annexed Scotch Lane specifically for a proposed development that would, would have been in the South Hills, which ended up with the, the South Hills Preservation, and ultimately Measure V.
So, so this land, and it was contingent upon Loma Linda's providing the services? Because that is one of the immutable aspects of LAFCO's leadership. Their leadership says, if you can't provide the service, you don't get the land. And they, and if it goes to a community that cannot provide the service, then they try to claw it back. So what happened here, from, if that's true, that we annexed this in 1989, on the, on the, on the promise, or the prospect, that we would provide services to it, that is probably, you know, just guessing, probably what impelled the citizens of Loma Linda to rise up and pass the 1996 initiative, because they didn't want to have a connection to Ritchie Canyon. And, and the 1996 initiative was incomplete in that task of preventing the connection of the streets. And that's where Measure V came in. Measure V said, you can't connect to, you can't connect to this street, you can't connect to that street, you can't connect to any street that has any south terminus. So that finished the job. But at that point, LAFCO had buyer's remorse. Why did we let Loma Linda annex a property that they can't service? So that's what impelled LAFCO to entertain this change in sphere of influence. And I see that in retrospect. I didn't know it was there until tonight, that they had let us annex this property with that, with that promise. That they had le- let us annex this property with that, with that promise. So this is not, this, LAFCO is going to be completely unsympathetic to any request to undo the sphere of influence change, because that's what they wanted from the beginning.
Well, depending on the membership, it may be completely.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about the staff. Uh, the staff of LAFCO, or like just the staff of our city. They have a lot of influence over the members. You know, we can go and individually lobby the members of the LAFCO board and they would get, it sounds like, because we have a divided council, they would get mixed signals and they would, you know, you'd have to think that the, that the staff report has a compelling argument. But I, you know, I, I think you can try that, if you get, if you get this council agendized for that, you can try it. And if you bifurcated the request into Scotch Lane and the other, you would get more votes on the Scotch Lane rescission than you would on, on the whole project.
I, I think we're done.
I think we're, we're done, we're done with public comment.
I, I have one last question.
Sure.
This is a simple one, I think. And that is, I also heard in the developers' proposal, and I'm, I'm not against developers, they've built Loma Linda up. But maintain two hundred and twenty-seven acres of open space, but I don't have a clue what that means. What does that change from what already exists?
From, from what I understand is, they would partition that property in half. So the southerly facing portion, the part that's behind the, the slope of hill, and as, as the developer says, not visible from Loma Linda, would be developed as a residential development.
Okay, so that sounds good. Is the burden it places on the city?
It, that would not place any burden on the city of Loma Linda, it would all fall on Colton.
So there's no added liability or anything?
It's, Colton would have to provide water, sewer, fire protection, police for that, for that new development.
Even though it would be Loma Linda property?
It will not be Loma Linda property.
He's asking about the north.
The northerly facing portion will remain in Loma Linda.
It's already in Loma Linda.
It's already here, we're, we're already providing.
So that was my purpose of my question. Would it change anything?
No.
In my opinion.
Well, yes, it would. It is currently private property. And it would become public property.
So does that add to our liability?
Well, if you consider that you now own the property, yes, but you would also have the benefits of its use that you currently don't have, unless you're trespassing.
Yeah, but those South Hills are trespassed all the time. I mean, I could name names, but I won't of motorcycle advocates that are up there every weekend.
Yeah. And that's why, that's why, it's my contention that this entire project south of the San Jacinto Fault, the big tall ridge, the part that's proposed for development, is of very little interest to hikers in the city of Loma Linda. It's not part of the trail system. It's used mostly now by Jeeps and motorcycles that rip through it and anger on a regular basis one of the residents of Scotch Lane. Because they go into that property down Scotch Lane. And Scotch Lane is, is a private road, it's not a public road, it's dirt. And they go through there and, and then just rip up the hills. And he's constantly complaining about it, and he's right. And we try. Jarb's gone out there. He puts little pathetic little barriers that are, that are, you know.
They don't call his barriers pathetic.
It's, it's like, it's like trying to protect the sou- southern border with ten miles of wall. You just can't do it. So it's, it's a huge liability currently.
I actually have an eco-friendly proposal that I'm working with the Sheriff's Department on to fix some of those problems, but we have talked about it later.
That would be great. But, but as far as liability goes, we still have the liability of whatever gets in there through, through, um, Scotch Lane.
Here's the thing, though, what I thought was interesting, that one of our commenters, a, a comment that was made, was that those extra three hundred and fifty homes are going to add more of an influx of people into those back hills. Because those three hundred and fifty people are going to want to go out and walk those hills and access those hills, just like our residents do growing up Mountain View.
But if they're pedestrians, who cares? That's what hills are for. That's why we like the hills. And how many, how many peo-
Somebody falls down a hill and breaks their ankle, is, is there any liability to the city?
There's no change in the current, in the ownership of whatever is left, because see, there, there, you know, believe it or not, in this town, private property has private property rights. And, and if someone else owns the property, then anybody trespassing on it is their responsibility. So they're currently, they currently have the. And, but, but the difference is that the northern fifty-five percent of the four hundred and some acres that they own is going to be gifted to the city of Loma Linda, apparently, by some, some commitment.
But is that a gift we can afford to accept?
It's the same as what we have in the eastern part with all the trails. It's the same stuff. You know, we can, we can groom trails on it.
Yeah.
We can, you know, put little street signs on the trails, we can do whatever we want. And yes, we would have liability. But we would also have the, the full unfettered use of the property. So there, there are advantages that go with the disadvantages. But currently, what, but, but people keep making comments, they keep saying, we're going to give land away to Colton. It's not your land. It's, it's someone else's land that happens to be in the city limits of Loma Linda. It's not your land. Like, like if you, if you, if you were, your property was annexed to another city, the city is not giving your land away. You still own the land, either way.
No, I understand, I understand. No, I, my concerns are primarily.
And I, and I want people not to develop this attitude that the city owns the whole community. The, the people, the landowners own it. The city is just here to set up the rules and to set up the boundaries, and that's what we do. We don't own it, and we can't tell.
Well, except South Hills, we own a lot of that.
Yeah, true, we do. We do. But that's, that would be, that would be expanded by two hundred and twenty-some acres. By this, by, by if this deal was super.
That was my question.
According to what they've said, but, you know, according to some of the people, they're so dishonest, you can't trust anything that they'll do.
Well, I think that's smoke and mirrors, because that north slope that they want to give away to us, they can't develop. It would be, it wouldn't pencil out to any money, so there's no point in it. So it, it is a ploy to sweeten the deal for us, another.
Why is it regarded as a ploy when, when it is, it is a gift? Why is it a ploy? Why, why is it everything cast as a ploy?
It's not land that can be easily developed for profit.
But, but so what?
So then why even include that?
Why include it? Because now you can't walk across it without trespassing.
And nobody does, we already talked about that. Well, we already talked about it. We don't have trails and you're not supposed to be there and it's whatever, so why?
People do walk across that northern part of it.
But, but why, why throw that in?
It's Oakwood Drive. You go up Oakwood Drive and then you just walk across to the other hills. People do it all the time.
Why not come in and present a plan that says, hey, we're going to, we want to move these, the two hundred and whatever it is, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven?
Just two hundred acres of vertical property.
Yeah, we want to move the two twenty-seven into Colton and that's all we care about. But no, it comes in with this big elaborate thing about, hey, and we're going to give you two hundred and we're going to.
I can't figure out why.
I don't think they're giving two hundred acres. It says that it's going to be conserved in perpetuity. I've never heard them say that it's going to be gifted to Loma Linda.
It will be. That's the, that's part of what they've presented. I don't, unless they're dishonest and the whole thing.
Maintain two hundred and twenty-seven acres of open space.
Conserve, yeah, conserve in perpetuity. That doesn't mean that Loma Linda's going to get it.
Well, that's just because you're reading, that's the only thing you're reading. But, but the, but the quote ploy, the ploy was, yes, Loma Linda City will receive two hundred and twenty-seven acres to be preserved in perpetuity as open space.
Councilman Daley, did we answer your questions?
Does that answer your?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Don't let him sit down.
So it seems legally, we can't do anything tonight. Um, would it be appropriate to make a motion that when this does come up in a year and a half, or however long it is, that it automatically be put on the agenda? Because that's like the concern, right? Like this is going to slip by us and no one's going to look at it, it's going to be automatically.
The chance is a better zero.
I, I understand that, but it's still a concern that a lot of residents and members of this dais have. So I'm saying, can we like, make a pre-motion kind of to have that put on the agenda automatically?
For what?
When the annexation actually comes back.
Well, that would automatically be on the agenda then.
I don't think so.
That would require annex.
No, it, it, the law only says that they're required to notice us. If we did not take action to put it on, again, that's my concern with all this. The developer doesn't care, he'll wait us out. All of us will be gone, and there'll be a new council.
Well, Leonardo will still be here, he'll.
And, you know, nobody will remember any of this, and, and staff will get some notice from LAFCO saying, hey, we're going to annex this. And, and if we, if we don't affirmatively put it on the agenda to discuss it, it will automatically pass. That is what I've said from the beginning, and I have our own people arguing with me about it. And, and that is the truth. If we are not paying attention, it would automatically pass. That, I, that's one, but again, this, this is a, this is a body, we, we have to do anything.
So to make sure it doesn't automatically pass, can, would that be a valid motion?
Yes, I, I spoke to Conrad about this. I think he mentioned it earlier, that you can take an action, that's within the agenda, to direct staff to bring the matter back for further discussion and a decision on any annexation application that's filed with LAFCO, uh, within the sixty days.
So is that your motion?
So I would move.
I think you said it pretty well.
Yeah, so I would move that when the city of Loma Linda receives, yeah, let me just clarify. Uh, so when the city of Loma Linda receives an application from LAFCO, whether it's for this project or any project, um, that it automatically be put on that, on the meeting closest to when that notification was received.
The next available meeting within the sixty days.
And assuming it has five days' notice.
Correct.
Yes, yes. Well, we, we need time to agendize it, but if we received it and it got.
Sixty days.
Well, we need to agendize and do our regular, uh, meeting schedule, but you could always do a special meeting if necessary, anytime within the sixty days.
That would have the function of putting a damper on it from the developer's standpoint, I would think. It's like, like saying we're not going to do anything about it, so it's just, I'm not arguing for that, I'm just trying to think this out. If you're the developer, what would you be doing? You'd be saying, well, now I don't even know if it's going to happen or not. So why should I do it? Yeah, so I'm just wondering if that, is that the right thing to do? Maybe we should just, you know, quit kicking it down the road and make a decision and be done with it.
That's where I'm at. And, and the reason I'm there is because I can only imagine being one of those homeowners, stressed out of my mind, dealing with this every day. You know what I mean? And, and, and here's my position. We do whatever we can in response to what we've been asked to do. And if it ultimately is out of our control by LAFCO or God himself, we've done what we've been asked to do. We've had more than enough people approach us, either individually, via email, on, on, uh, public comment. Um, it's, it's very clear that I, I haven't, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, but I haven't heard other residents speaking out affirmatively. Now, that'll kick the developer into gear, he's going to start knocking on doors. Um, but right now, I feel like people have cried out to us and they're stressed out. And I want to help them. That's my position.
But to Dr. Lawrence's point, like we can't.
They live, they, they work here in our community. We heard from people that live here in our community. I, I don't care if they vote for me or not. They're citizens, they're human beings, they're people that have asked us for help. That's my position.
I'd just make one last comment on that. Uh, Councilman Gindal's proposal uh, to give direction to staff to respond to any application and give you the opportunity to act at that time, well within the sixty days, is appropriate because even if you were to express some position tonight against the project, um, until you receive the actual application, there's nothing to take action on and.
I, I know, Rich, but we disagree on that. My point is, we could still send a letter to LAFCO. That is an actionable item.
Well, you can send a letter requesting them to consider something.
Exactly.
But that would not be binding. Whenever that application hits LAFCO and they give notice, that is the time when you have to take action. You can do both, but, but I, I think that having that led, that, uh, direction to staff to agendize any future LAFCO application is the appropriate measure because uh, there's no application to object to at this point, number one. And number two, the project that is presented at that time by the developer, by Colton, after that lengthy process uh, at Colton, may be an entirely different project that the citizens may or may not favor or oppose. We don't know, because it's not before us at this time and will not be until it goes through that process with Colton.
Yeah. Again, I just go back to, people are, are, I have spoken to people, people have, have emailed me, they've written letters. Um, people are concerned and it's causing them consternation.
That's politics. Life in the big city.
Yep, and I'm good with it, I can take it on.
To reference the en banc hearing that went on today, and it's talking about, you know, standing and is there no other relief and things like that, the people of Colton, I'm just thinking out loud, or the people of Colton, their relief would be to go to the Colton City Council and say, stop this project.
Yeah.
Right? So there's nothing stopping them from doing that, number one. On the other hand, I was sitting here thinking about this and then you actually said it. I know. I'm so confused about the whole thing, I wouldn't even know what an appropriate thing would do, for you to do, but just to say what I think. To me, you know, like you have certain laws of the land, takes certain acts to, to, uh, change the constitution. Others are regular laws and so forth. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with the idea that something was voted by the citizens of the city. And then we kind of say, well, yeah, we'll take this part and hand it over there, we'll take this, I, I kind of don't like that. I understand all the arguments for why we might want to do it. So I almost think the best thing to do would be, okay, fine, let's put it on the ballot and let people vote for it. I don't know what all is involved in that, and I don't know.
That's what I asked for.
Should we, should we do that every time we annex property? Well, maybe if it.
Because the people voted for the land that was there when we, when we passed Measure V. Now, since then, we've annexed property on the eastern side, so should we put that on the ballot and so include it in Measure V?
Well, I don't know, it's.
It's, well, it's, it's, my, my point is, it is, Measure V covers whatever the limits of the city of Loma Linda are. And when we annex property, or when we detach property, it becomes part of Measure V, or it drops off from being part of Measure V, because it's not Loma Linda.
Yeah, I get.
So Measure V is not Measure V anymore. Measure V is the general plan and the, and the, and the, and the laws of Loma Linda.
I get.
It is not the laws of the county, it's not the laws of Colton. So when we annex from the county, that falls under Measure V. If we detach to Colton, it falls out of Measure V. That's, it doesn't require a vote of the people either direction to do that. And the, the whole point of representative democracy is to keep that messiness of direct democracy out of the process, because at some point, we have to step up and, you know, pull up our big panties and make the decisions. You can't just fall back on a plebiscite every time there's a, there's a confusion.
But you supported Measure V and campaigned for it, right?
I did not.
You did not? But I mean, you, you identified.
I was, I was manifestly neutral on Measure V, because I was elected five months before Measure V passed. And I was asked to support it, and I said, I don't know the will of the people yet, so I'm going to wait and just let it play itself out. I, after Measure V passed, my role was to interpret Measure V in the most generous way possible to prevent it from, from being the odious thing that developers said it would be when they, when they floated Measure U as its opponent. And I remember Measure V passed with something like fifty-three percent. Measure U got fifty-one percent. And it was the confuser, it was the, you know, the opposite of Measure V. And it was really confusing, because the signs had cursive U's and Vs on them, and you couldn't tell which one they were even talking about. Because why would they put two, why would anybody put two measures against each other with letters? put two measures against each other with letters that looked the same? This was before, Jarb was possibly in San Bernardino at the time.
No, I was here, but.
Okay, yeah, so it was the, it was the, the registrar of voters or whatever, they, they named it, UNB, but anyway, that aside, Measure V won, and then what happened is the opponents of Measure V attempted to interpret it in the most negative and punitive way possible so that they could overturn the will of the people. Well, I opposed that, so I, once it was passed, I took up the, that, the banner of Measure V and I said, we're going to interpret this in the most benign way possible so that it's not this odious thing, and the proponents of Measure V were on my side in interpreting it in a generous way. So, one example, the, the proposal, Measure V says that if a project is proposed and a traffic study is done that shows a degradation in the traffic quality by letter grades at an intersection impacted by that project, the developer shall mitigate the negative impact on that intersection. So if an intersection went from a C to a D, or went from an A to a B, they'd have to mitigate it back up to wherever it was before their project. Well, if you interpret that in a, in a severe way, then you would say, they have to build the intersection out before they build their project in order to make the, the improvements. But the way it ended, ended up being interpreted was that they would, they would contribute their share of the impact on that intersection toward future improvements to improve that traffic quality. So that was a huge difference because otherwise, you know, let's say you've got, you build one house, you build one house, and because of a traffic study, it trips a letter grade degradation in an intersection, you know, a mile away, you would have to single-handedly fix that intersection and put in more lanes, put in more traffic lights, more turns, protected turns, and it's ridiculous, and what you should do is you should say, okay, your one house is .01 impact on that intersection and the future project will be a million dollars, so you pay 10 grand, okay? So that's how it was interpreted, that was my involvement with Measure V. Now, Measure V on this project, measure, the proponents of Measure V offered to Leroy Hansberger increased density and exclusion from Measure V, most of the impacts would have been excluded if he agreed not to connect the streets from Reggie Canyon to the South Streets of Loma Linda. Well, he could have taken that deal and run with it, but what he wanted to do was stand in solidarity with other developers and say, no, I'm not going to cut a deal that benefits me and, and, and lends my support to Measure V, which will hurt all the other developers. So that's the only reason this project was included in Measure V in the first place.
This is Dennis Hansberger?
This is Hansberger's dad, Leroy, he was the developer. So, the proponents of Measure V, and this is what I mean when I said I did my homework, I was there when this happened, Measure V was being floated, and Leroy Hansberger came to me after I got elected and he said, boy, can I get this project approved, would you support it, you know, he did the typical song and dance, and I said, I don't know, let me ask. So I went to the proponents of Measure V and I said, what do you think about that? And they said, oh, well, we don't really care about, about that portion of the hills because nobody uses it. And of course, they were not considering Scotch Lane at the time, I wasn't considering Scotch Lane at the time, I didn't know Scotch Lane belonged to us at the time. So, when people are upset because of what I've said, well, I'm sorry that I forgot about Scotch Lane, okay? Scotch Lane is a very important part of our city, in fact, I'm fighting to keep it part of our city. So, I did my homework, they didn't care, they said, if they, if he wants to put in projects there, fine, we don't care. And then Measure V passed and he gave up his opportunity to mitigate it, and then it locked him out. And, and all of this conspiracy theory stuff about, you know, so and so bought it and they bought it the last minute, they don't realize the actual history. What happened is Leroy Hansberger bought the property from one of a two-man partnership and the second guy who didn't agree to the sale sued to get the deal unwound and to get the property back. That's why he bought it at, at that late hour because the courts awarded him the property back for the sale, original sale price. So, this whole thing is a whole, just a pile of conspiracy theories that are not based in fact.
Sounds like QAnon.
Yeah.
So what's your motion?
I reclaim my time here. I got, I think everything you said, even at this late hour. I like to look at things, I can't remember the Latin term, I'm going to mess it up, what is it, reductio ad absurdum or something like that, I forget what it is. Okay, let's just say, for instance, you didn't support Measure V, however, you campaigned against developers that were going to do the South Hills, so.
I didn't not support Measure V, I just didn't, I didn't actively support it.
I'm just trying to make a point, I'm not making any attack on you or anything, so I listened to your 14-minute dialogue.
I reclaim my two seconds.
Let me say something just for a second here. We, when the people passed Measure V, in my mind, what I was voting for at the time was, I don't want any development up there other than what Measure V says. If I would have looked at Measure V and thought, hmm, somebody could just give away little pieces of parcels of this thing and, yeah, technically, it's still not in Loma Linda, but we'll just go ahead and give them away, we'll give that piece away and that piece away and that piece away and that piece away, and before too long, I've got the city of Colton having some 500-unit condominium looking over my pool. So, I don't think anybody would say in that situation that in any way we were being fair to Measure V by doing that, that's the point I'm trying to make, and I see what you're saying about, so, so, I understand it's a portion that's sitting over there by itself, I get that too, that's why this is such a difficult thing.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you, if it was, if it was overlooking your house, I would vote against it.
Well, not just because of me, but I'm just saying in general, to, to, that would be against what I would think the spirit is Measure V. So the question is, little pieces of giving away the mountains that are protected under Measure V that was voted on by Measure V, I just feel a little squeamish about it a little bit, like, you know, hey, we voted protect, but we'll just give that away and then we don't, it's not ours anymore, so we don't have to protect, I kind of don't like that. I've got no problem with his motion either. Yeah, I got no problem with that, but I, but I, but I do think that it might be better, well, maybe they're watching at home and they know, but I think it might be better if Lafco knew earlier rather than later, and I think it might be better if the developer knew earlier rather than later, and I think it'd be better for sure for the people if they knew earlier rather than later that the council, now, maybe, who knows, a couple years from now, the developer may go at him and he's gone, and two years, four years from now, these people may go at you and you're gone, and then it's a whole different council, who knows? But, so maybe, and on one hand, you could look at it and say, well, the letter's premature because you don't know what's going to happen later on, on the other hand.
So legally, we can't do anything tonight, which is why I made that motion, because it's the only thing we can do, and I guess if there's no second, we can't really.
I'm going to second the motion.
Well, real quick, before we do that, my suggestion is that we make a motion to have staff draft a letter and bring back a letter for consideration to send to Lafco, if, if somebody would be interested in making that motion. But we do have a first and a second on the other thing, which I think is also appropriate to make sure we flag this and we get it in front of us if a decision is made, a year, 10 years, however long down the road. So, we have a first and a second, Madam Clerk, let's, let's call the. We have a motion that basically if, if this were to go to any other form of movement in terms of annexation, that we would immediately agendize it and discuss it, which is absolutely appropriate, and then if anybody is interested in making another motion that we consider a letter, that, that's where I would be also. But let's vote on that, on his motion first.
The, the motion is to direct staff that any future Lafco application regarding annexation of the subject property is received by the city, that it come back to the city council, that be agendized for the city council at the next meeting.
Yeah, the most immediate meeting, right?
Okay.
Good with that?
Before we vote, what if we run into a problem with the 60 days, should it have some sort of note in there that says, or a special meeting we called?
She's nodding her head, so.
But in, but in the whole history of Loma Linda, we haven't had a 60-day lapse between meetings.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Gindal, are you good with that modification? Are you good with your second still?
Yeah.
Let's call a roll on that.
To conclude, if necessary, calling a special meeting of the 60-day requirement cannot be met with a regular meeting? Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Gindal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
Mayor DuPere?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion or any other motions?
I would like to say one thing regarding what was said by one of our planning commissioners early on, and in her note here, she says that every, each council member was contacted individually, shared their development plans with positive support, I'd just like to go on record in saying, nobody contacted me ever unless it was a stray email, nobody shared their development plans with me or tried to engender any positive support from me.
What development was this?
This one.
This one?
Yes.
I've not heard from anyone either.
Well, I'm just clarifying for me, I don't know what was going on with everybody else, but for me, I'm clarifying that, and as far as a violation of the Brown Act, even if I did listen to the developer or somebody, that's not a violation of the Brown Act, I committed no violation of Brown Act, I don't know anybody up here who did, I had no idea coming to this meeting who was going to vote for what or who, how anybody felt on this, really.
Yeah.
So I just want to say that so that it's in the record that that is something that is, at least for me, is not true.
So this was in 2017, and I think during the meeting even, you didn't vote, right? It was?
No, he was conflicted out, both Dr. Daley and.
It says four of five councilmen, so it makes it appear as though the city council was all this way, and I just wanted to say, whether I had anything to do with it or not, that was not a true statement for me.
We drew straws and it was a three to one vote. Two to one, boy, wow, it is getting late, I'm sorry, yes, two to one vote. Okay, I don't want to drag this out any longer, any other comments or any other motions?
So are we bringing this back on the agenda?
Heavens.
That's up to you.
What does the, what does the rest of the body think?
I, I, I would say, if there is a credible purpose for bringing it back, to just keep talking about it, I would be opposed to it.
I think the purpose is we can't legally take any other action tonight, so it would be if we wanted to take other action, it would have to be brought back. So if the body thinks that we want to take another action outside of the motion we just made, then we bring it back into the next meeting we have, otherwise, we're done for it until something else happens.
Yeah, my, my other, my suggestion, and again, I can't make the motion, is that if you were interested to make a motion to send another letter to Lafco, and then that would be a direction to have staff bring a letter back for approval on an agenda, and we could have this discussion again on that.
So for that, we would have to have another meeting where we would give that direction and then we would have to have another meeting.
You give the direction for them to bring the letter back at that meeting and then we would discuss whether or not we wanted to send it, is my understanding of what he said earlier.
Is that right? We only have to have one meeting instead of two?
You can always send a letter expressing your concerns, I, I just want to reiterate, we can't take any binding action tonight or in the future on an application to detach and annex to Colton until that application is filed with Lafco, that has not happened as of today, and we don't know when or if that will ever happen, so the earlier motion, I think, was appropriate to monitor that and then take action within the 60 days if you want to prevent that annexation from occurring. But short of that, you could send a letter with your concerns, but that would not have any binding effect on Lafco at this time. Well, you could give direction to staff to write a letter, I'm just not sure what consensus there is on that at this point.
So kind of going back to my point, we would have to have another meeting because I, like was just mentioned, there's no consensus yet and I, I don't even know what direction we would give staff at this point because there is a division. So again, if the body agrees that we want another meeting, then someone can make a motion.
Well, you can make a motion to bring it back, say, in a month from now, if you want to put it back on the agenda.
I see some nodding heads.
On the other hand, I don't know how much a letter is even needed, I mean, I would think it would get back to them pretty quick, what was going on here.
Well, yes and, yeah, yes, yes and no, so, so the reality is, and this is what I've had to explain to the folks that I've talked to, is that none of us as individuals can lobby one way or, or another, we all represent the council and so we have to go with what the majority decision is. And so, yes, we, we are divided, but that's part of what happens when we make, you guys all know this, I mean, I'm just more or less saying it for the public, but we make a decision and some of us may not agree with it, that is the decision of the city and we all have to stand by it, just like the vote that we did three years ago, not all of us agreed with it, but that was the decision of the city and that is where we legally stand. So, without taking that any further, we are now, we are now bound to that 2017 position, officially.
Okay, so I think one thing that everyone here agrees on is Scotch Lane? So, can we start off with at least that, so I move that we write a letter to Lafco or give direction to staff to write a letter for Lafco for us to review at the next council meeting to exclude Scotch Lane from any annexation that, to Lafco, what is it? I need help on that motion.
That they would, any annexation that they would make.
I will second that. I said I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the motion is to direct staff to draft a letter to Lafco requesting that they exclude Scotch Lane from any future annexation and to bring that back to the next city council meeting for review.
I have a question, though.
Sure.
Of our city attorney, because this is not an action before us, is this an appropriate action to take? Because it's not agendized.
All right, the agenda includes possible direction to staff regarding input into environmental review or potential annexation by Colton, so the, the agenda was a little bit vague because there was really nothing before you, but I think that a letter with that limited purpose is not outside the agenda description as, as stated by the councilman.
All right, well, let's, let's vote on it. We have a first and a second, unless you withdraw your second. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Jendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Pardon?
Aye.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley?
No.
Mayor DuPere?
Yes.
And it passes. Thank you.
Okay.
And then my last motion, and this one, again, because it doesn't seem we can come to a consensus, and it's going to be that we...
[inaudible]
All right. So last motion of the night for me. I move that, or we give direction to the staff to write a letter to LAFCO detailing some of the concerns that the city council has had tonight in regards to the El Prado project, the Rancho del Prado project, to be reviewed upon at the next city council meeting.
This is the same proposal, but now it's for the... This one's detailing concerns.
I mean, I'm speaking in opposition because I think we're getting into a lot of redundancy here. Citizens we know, after the last month, will be very actively involved with this, and I'm not comfortable defining what is a legitimate issue and concern and what is not. I, I heard, I took notes, I asked questions, but I still don't know for sure. And so for Loma Linda to city council to assume that we can define valid issues, I'm just not ready to do that yet.
So, to answer the mayor's question, and also your mayor pro temp, I purposely left that a little vague because I knew, again, that we don't have consensus on any, on any particular point, which is why I said that it's only going to be to detail concerns that the city council has had, and send a letter to LAFCO for that. Because it seems that's the most we can do legally, or even, like, makes sense to do. I don't think that our citizens that have spoken today are asking us to do anything other than that, because, again, we can't do anything. So I think we've appeased both sides if all these motions go through. We've answered our citizens and addressed their concerns to the best legal way that we can. And at the same time, the developer is able to continue their negotiations with Colton, which we have no say in.
So, just for clarification, in the direction for even the preceding letter, is all of this would have to come back, so there would be another chance to debate it or even stop it at that point when it comes back. But that's to officially get it on the agenda, whatever form, and then, as we have done with previous things, we can either decide not to send it, or we could decide to edit it on the fly at that meeting also.
On what basis do we get somebody in the board to check all these things out? Does anybody that interviewed the developer?
Sure, if you'd like to, you go ahead. Okay. Well, then, some of the rest of us might. So, the, the motion is to bring a letter back here for approval, just like the other one.
My comment on this is, the reason I differed with him on the prior one is because I believe in popular sovereignty. And the people of, of Scotch Lane have told me that they want to stay in Loma Linda, and I told them I would fight for them to stay in Loma Linda, and I believe in that. The owners of the El Prado project don't want to stay in Loma Linda, so I still believe in popular sovereignty. However, in that case, there has to be a sweetener for Loma Linda to want to do something like that. And why that's some kind of a criminal act is, you know, it's like, whenever you do a deal, you want to have positives along with any negatives. So, I differ with Councilman Daley on that, but I agree with him completely that this motion has, is an inappropriate motion. It's premature. The actual decision will be made by some council in the future, maybe not us. And, and it is, and I appreciate Councilman Leonard's sentiment. I have stated on multiple occasions that it is passing rude to let someone go 95% of the way out of the birth canal and then kill the baby as it's being, right before it cries. So it is, it is not pleasant to get surprises late in a project's timeline. However, in this case, if we gave an opinion, it would be unclear because it's an opinion given by people who have not seen the project, have not seen an application, don't know what they're voting on, and are just sending, and they're not even necessarily the ones who will make the final decision. So I think it increases the uncertainty to put out a letter now. So, what I'm saying is I've, I've seconded a lot of your motions, but not this one.
I understand. And again, to reiterate, I purposely use the wording I did, "We're not giving an opinion, we are detailing some of the concerns that we have." So it's a middle ground, basically, between saying, "No, this project is not going to go ahead," like, "Loma Linda City Council does not support it," and us doing nothing. This way, we're at least letting LAFCO know what the concerns are, and as Councilman Leonard said, if they're watching this, which it's going to be available on YouTube, they're going to know anyways, this is just having it in writing. So, it's a middle ground because, again, I see that there's a lot of debate yet to be had, so we're not making a definite yes or no.
And an organization like LAFCO is going to be looking for documentation and evidence. I, I can tell you, I can tell you that the members of LAFCO are already watching They're already, they're already sensitive because some of these folks that are reaching out to us are reaching out to those elected board members also. And so, I, I think what happens with a lot of politics is everybody looks at who's going to make their first move. And I have never been shy about making a first move for anything. Half the time, it gets me into trouble, as a lot of my peers and friends know. But that's who I am, and so be it.
I get your point. It's kind of like China saying they're going to take over Guam versus Bali, or something like that, right? One's a U.S. protectorate that we're a little more concerned with, and the other one isn't quite so much. So, I, I get why you'd want to separate them, and I'm actually okay with that. I think, I think if we wanted to do that for now, I'm okay with that, too, just bring the Scotch Lane letter back. That in itself will send a message to them, some sort of message. And in, and going back to the en banc thing, is there is other relief for the, for the, for those citizens to do, is get it stopped at Redland, I mean, Colton before it comes here, so. But yet, we have a trigger set up now so that if it does come, then we can report it again. So if it'll get us all out of here, I'm fine with just sending the one letter to Scotch Lane, too. Because I think there's adequate protection now set up for, for the Colton, to, for the other property.
Okay. Well, I, I think that motion died for lack of a second. And I'm looking around, and I see that probably we are done with this. Yes. So, all right. Bringing out the agenda, on to item L, reports of council members. Seeing none, moving on, reports of staff or officers?
No, sir.
Okay, and we are going to move to adjourn this council meeting. Thank you all.
And before the microphone goes off, to any people, residents of Colton, and specifically Crystal Ridge, who are my good friends, this is just politics. We're still friends, I hope.